And he needs a second to get to Facebook Live.
Okay. You eyeball?
I know it takes a few seconds for him to get that going. It says live on Facebook, but it'll just take a second.
Okay.
All right, you should be good to go.
I believe we're there.
Okay, we're all set. Okay, just welcome, welcome everybody to the Worcester School Committee meeting. Sorry about the delay. A little technology issues, but we think we fixed them. So we're gonna start with call to me in order in roll call.
Mrs. Biancheria?
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Monfredo?
Ms. Novick?
Here.
And Mayor Petty?
Yeah. Bob, can you see if you can find Diana and?
Yep, we're working on now. I don't see their number, but when they're in, we will let you know. Okay, we see, yep, we see. Just one second here.
I see John, I don't see Diana.
Yeah, bring John in.
Okay, John's over.
Well, not let me make my panelist. Oh, there he is.
Yep, somebody's dialed in. You can just give them the ability to speak. There's no like make a panelist type option.
Okay. So John, can you hear us?
I'm gonna unmute him. Andrew? Sarah?
I just put ass unmute. You can't actually unmute people.
Bob, Jennifer can't get in. She doesn't have an invite.
Jennifer Boulay's in.
Jennifer Boulay is the one who said she couldn't get in.
Okay.
Oh, she found it. She found it. Sorry.
John, you have to unmute yourself on your phone.
He has to unmute himself.
Do they even know what it is? Star six on Zoom?
How do you unmute on a phone, I guess is the question?
Usually a code or something.
A what?
Star six. How goes mute and unmute?
Say that again, Bob?
Star six.
So John, hit star six. Here he is. Okay, John, you're in?
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so John's here. So just. T five oh eight. Okay, so Bob, why don't you give Diana a call and see if you can get her going. We're gonna start the meeting. Okay. We already did the roll call. We're gonna stand for the pledge allegiance. We'll go from there real quick. Aye, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation and the God. There is a justice for.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna have next, we're gonna have the approval of the record. And we have August 5th, 2020, August 6th, 2020, August 13th, 2020, and August 20th, 2020. Roll call.
Mrs. Biancheria? Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next, we're gonna do, just so people know, what we're gonna plan on doing is about six o'clock, we may break for executive session depending on if we're almost finishing. We'll finish the meeting first, then go to executive session. But if the meeting is gonna be a long one, we will go to executive session at 6:00 PM. So people who are on executive session won't have to wait. Then our next is communication and petitions. Consider a communication from the Racism Free Worcester Public School Group regarding nine areas of concerns. I think they've emailed them, and so everybody should copy that. And then these are what my understanding. These are.
Can I address that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, one second. My understanding is that it's the Worcester Public Schools students, a number of these, and a lot of these in the committees already. So my suggestion is gonna be that we we give them to the committees that they're in. Even though, but we'll have maybe a couple, you know, a few, I think we have like several people want to speak here a couple minutes apiece. John, you want to speak after they speak?
No, I'd like to speak now, Mr. Mayor.
What you want, about what?
I just like to address that issue because I certainly appreciate citizenry input, but there's certainly understandable process involved, just as everyone who comes to the school committee has to get his or her name and address. And this petition has no name or address, and we can argue that it's not needed, but the intent of our meetings has always been to have this information. It's, Mr. Mayor, it's past practices that we have that have prevailed, whether it's someone coming before the committee or someone sending in a petition. So my my suggestions, why can't we hold this item until the next meeting and find out whose names should be on this petition? And that's my motion.
Well, they're on tonight, so they're gonna mention their names when they speak. So I think we're all set.
All right, but.
And I did talk to. And I did talk to the law department, and we don't have a rule, so and there's nothing in the Roberts rules.
Well.
I actually.
Again, you know, this, I understand this has been past practices that we've always had, and if we let this go, setting a precedent for future agenda items, our petitions, our individuals coming before the committee with no names, it's 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 going to not be in the best interest of the Worcester Public Schools.
I understand. But I understand, and they're gonna speak, they're gonna give their names tonight, so when they speak, so so it's a bunch of stuff. Just give them their due and see where we go. So we're gonna go, we're gonna open it up to, I'm not sure who open it up to. If you want to put your hands up, maybe. Do people recognize any of the name? I wish now we wish I did know the name. Okay, you want to unmute everyone? Can we do that, Bob, or?
Yes, one second.
Diana was just promoted to a panelist, so she.
Oh, yeah, Diana was in, I think, on iPad. Yep, okay. I meant to say that. I forgot, so.
So we have Cynthia Sicard Melanson. I will unmute you. Please state your city residence.
Well, Cynthia, Cynthia, are you one of the petitioners here or?
No, I just want, I'm, wait a minute. That, um. Sorry about that. Yeah, I live in Leicester and I age to the physically handicapped, and I wanted to know how the students can be six feet apart at a school bus stop. When they get on a school bus, they're three feet apart and one student per seat. And if they have a doctor's note, they don't have to wear a mask. Aren't you sending a mixed message?
No, okay, we'll get to that later on. We'll talk about that. So we'll take your comments and their advisement.
John, I have to meet you.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to get some of the students on. I know if the students can raise their hand. Or? Can you unmute everybody? We'll see if we get the students on. Can you do everybody, Bob, or Sarah?
Everybody's unmuted.
Okay, so so who wants to speak on the student petition? I don't think they're unmuted. No noise.
I can only ask them to unmute.
Are they after unmute themselves? Okay. Yes, who's that? Michelle?
Hi, yes, my name is Michelle La Range. I am not a student, but I am a educator within the school system. And I will say that I have been following the Racism Free WPS Instagram, and as an educator, I do find it just very saddening, I would say. I think it's very sad to read the stories of several students who have come online and unanimously just all agreed that they have experienced various forms of racism or just feeling so so burdened by it. And I would say that I'm calling in support of Agenda Item 7, which does involve the Racism Free WPS's eight demands. I think as an educator, you know, these are things that we really need to take seriously and consider. Because I can just hear the sadness in a lot of the students as they post. And as an educator, it just is something that is weighing on me.
Okay, thank you. We will go down to it. Just open, we'll just go down the list of the hands up here and see if this, and then we'll just go back to the person later on if they're not a student. So if they don't want, if they don't want to speak on this issue, let's go with Pat Chamberlain. Do you want to unmute yourself?
Hi, Mayor Petty, I'm not, didn't want to speak to this issue.
Okay, okay, so we'll come back. Is it all right if we come back to you, Pat, then, in a few seconds? Okay. Nancy Caswell, are you on the student one here too? We have a bunch of people.
No, sir, I'm here for the transportation folks.
Okay, so I think Marie Brulette?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, are you here for the student petition?
Yes, I'm calling in support of the petition.
Okay, go ahead.
So, yeah, I wanted to call to support that agenda item. I went to South High and I graduated in 2014. I had a really hard time in high school to the point that I think I missed like 20 days for my senior year, something like that. And I was very, very lucky that I had educators who were supportive, who I had at the time, Miss Benanda was my principal. She was very helpful and supportive of me. And I was able to graduate because I had structures around me as a student of privilege. I was a white student. I was in the Goddard program at South. I was very lucky, and it made me so sad that there are students who don't have that kind of support. And I think the agenda item that is being proposed and all of these demands that are being asked are a really, really crucial way to provide that kind of support to all students, especially, you know, restorative justice practices, having mental health available and mental health competency training for faculty and staff. I would love to see these things being implemented for students of the future so they can have the opportunity I had to be able to get the most out of the education, you know, grow as a person and get to have all of the opportunities in life that they really deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Okay, I think we already did the next two, right, Bob? I think Sarah. Robert, are you here for the student petition?
I'm gonna go with Louanne down here.
Okay, let's go out to the next person. Louanne, you here for the student petition?
Hello, Mayor Petty, how are you?
And yourself?
Good, thank you. I have a question about that Instagram. I read a few of those posts. Have any of those allegations actually been investigated? I asked because I read a comment on Mass Live, and a person said he wrote a fake post about racism and no one called him about it. So I'm wondering how many of those are actually true and how many of those are possibly fake?
We don't know. I don't, unless people report through the school department, I don't think we, I would guess we don't investigate unless we think it's right. A lot of people are not aware of the website either, I don't think. I think it's coming to like now, so people probably be reading it, but. Okay, a next speaker? Let's go, we'll just pick one.
Michaela Bunker?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, you here to talk about the student petition?
Yeah, I had two items I wanted to speak on, but I I don't know how you want me to proceed, just to talk about the student petition for now. Would I be able to talk again, or should I mention both?
No, let's go together. You get one time.
Okay, great.
They didn't get her name.
I'm Michaela Bunker.
Worcester Mass, Michaela?
I'm a resident of Worcester Mass. I work with Worcester Public Schools as a school adjustment counselor. And I wanted to speak in support to Agenda Item 7, the nine demands given by Racism Free WPS. I'm alum of Worcester Public Schools. I've worked as an instructional assistant for Worcester Public Schools. I'm now a SAC. And, you know, despite whether some of these stories have been substantiated, whether some of these stories have been had any follow through or follow up, I think it's important to know that students are paying attention to these issues. They want answers. They want to feel supported and safe in their schools. And to me, as a school adjustment counselor, it's just a really great reminder that students have sensitivities. They need to have things explained to them. They need to make sure that we're addressing issues to make sure that they, you know, are supported throughout their education. One of the items I wanted to speak on specifically, one of the demands, is just the call for restorative justice practices. I know in previous meetings you've talked about this as well. And I think, so I came from a district that utilized restorative justice. I was trained in it, and I've seen their effectiveness. But I've also seen where they can become more punitive than, you know, traditional disciplinary actions. So one thing I just wanted to put out there into the ether is just, you know, they they're most successful when they're implemented with fidelity, and that means everyone from administrators, educators, custodians, bus monitors need to receive and buy into both the training and the foundational knowledge of the philosophy of the practice. Otherwise, it's it's not successful. So it's a big undertaking, and it has really great rewards, but I would just really recommend talking to the experts, getting feedback, and having a really thoughtful plan before moving forward with it to make it successful. Really quickly, the other item, I can't remember which agenda item it is, but it is talking about retention of educators, especially educators of color. And I just wanted to throw out a suggestion that I've been toying with. I've, there are many psychs and sacs who are bilingual. They're certified. They are, you know, instrumental in working with our families, especially when we have difficulty getting interpreters to come to meetings if, you know, if it's a last minute meeting. And I, you know, for looking at retaining a wider group of people, especially those who have, who are not only bilingual but bicultural, I think it would be something to look into for either an additional pay step or through grant funding to really demonstrate respect and acknowledgement of the skills held by those who can speak multiple languages. So I just wanted to put it out there, and that's it. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Okay, Bob, Sarah, our next speaker would be, I guess, Bowen Lee, maybe, or?
All right, Bowen Lee, please state your phone name and city residence.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you here for the student petition?
I am. My name is Bowen Lee. I live in Worcester on Grove Street. I'm calling in support of the nine demands from.
Was it okay?
Michaela, I need to mute. Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Bob. Sorry about that.
Thank you, no problem. I am calling in support of the nine demands from Racism Free Worcester Public Schools. I currently teach in a private middle school in Worcester, and I try to push a lot of my students to consider public schools for high school, but I think a lot of them are worried about the presence of SROs in schools and some of the stories that their peers and neighbors and friends are sharing about their experiences. And it kind of, I think it changes the way that they think about public schools and the great offerings that our city has for students to be able to pursue success. I know that my students, even just visiting high schools, have had negative experiences interacting with those school resource officers. I also would like to say that I think that the idea that we should consider any of the posts on the Racism Free Worcester Public Schools Instagram page to say any of those are unsubstantiated is to silence student voice and to not tell students that we want to listen to them. So I think to consider any of them is not true is a misstep and fall is just not good for supporting our students. And I'd also like to push the school committee to take on anti-racism education. Looking at you all, I appreciate your public service, but I noticed that the identities of our school committee do not match the identities of our students, and I'd hope that we can all engage in training to let us kind of be aware of our blind spots and better serve all students.
Thank you, Bowen. I appreciate it. Let's go to Jeremy Shulkin. Jeremy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Jeremy. Go ahead. Just your name and city residence.
Sure. Hello, everybody. Thank you for listening to all these voices. My name is Jeremy Shulkin. I'm a Worcester resident and a Worcester Public Schools teacher, and I'm calling in support of Racism Free Worcester's or Racism Free WPS's petitions. I want to focus on SROs. WPS has used SROs as an expensive and ineffective Band-Aid over larger problems. And if a school believes it needs someone with a gun, a taser, and handcuffs stationed in the building, then I think this district needs to advocate stronger for resources that would eliminate the societal issues that create those beliefs. So this is a $1 million program. Remember, that's a lot of money, more than a lot of other cities are spending, especially per student, on police in schools. So this district cannot preach restorative justice and collaborative problem solving to its faculty and its students and then spend $1 million on having a police presence in those same schools. It's hypocritical, I think. So I would love to see the school committee take that $1 million program and apply it to the other eight petitions that will actually address the causes of these absences and disobedience and lack of engagement in school that we're also worried about. I think those eight petitions go a long way towards making our students feel more comfortable in schools, and I'd love to see some of those steps done to address that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeremy. Let's go to, about, is it DDI Mesa, the Mesa?
All right, DDI Mass, you're now unmuted. Please state your full name and city residence.
Hi, my name is Daniel Damassa. Are you able to hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you. So I'm a resident in the city of Worcester. I'm a professor in the Department of Humanities and Arts at WPI. I wanted to say I'm in support of the petition that has been put forward by Racism Free WPS. I think, first of all, I want to say that the notion that these claims are unsubstantiated is, this irks me for a particular reason, namely, I've been following this Instagram account for several weeks now, and there are probably hundreds of these posts. So unless a small army of students is working full time to do this, I think the notion that these are sort of one-off or made up issues is unrealistic. I think this is a real problem in our schools, and I think it's something that has to be taken seriously. The other thing that I want to note is just as a parent of a young child in Worcester, I'm really concerned when I read a lot of these stories. I'm white and my son is white, but even so, I don't want him to come into a school system where I intend to send him and be exposed to the sorts of inequities that I see perpetrated across the school system. And so I agree with the notion that school resource officers, you know, why are we spending $1 million on school resource officers when we struggle to keep teachers employed, when we struggle to hire new teachers? And that's something that's not even on the list of demands, but I would like for everyone to consider, what are the hiring practices in the Worcester Public Schools such that we wind up with, no doubt, many fantastic educators and fantastic teachers, but too many who are perpetuating the sorts of microaggressions, the sorts of racism that we find being recorded on this account? So I appreciate your listening, and I hope you take this seriously. I'm really glad that you're listening to all of us today.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, so let's go to, is it Marika Fox, maybe, on student, on student petition, Marika?
Marika, you're now unmuted. Please.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, yes, my name is Marika Fox. I live in Worcester. I'm a second year student teacher in the Worcester Public Schools in Maine-South. I also want to speak in support of all of the demands of the students behind the Racism Free WPS account. I would first of all like to say that I'm really proud of these students for all of the work that they've been doing and gathering these testimonials, but also express how disappointed I am that they have to do it. It's crazy that these students are having to do all of this work to advocate for just their own basic safety when it should be the responsibility of the school's system to provide that for them. It's impossible to really pick just one demand to talk about because they're all so important. I think every single one should be considered carefully and put into effect. Now, specifically speak on the restorative justice point, that I think integrating those systems and helping teachers use them is extremely important for combating a lot of the systemic issues that our students come into school facing. Students of color, low socioeconomic status students come into school and already have so much to deal with that, you know, white educators like myself, like the members of the school committee, can't even really begin to understand. The least we can do is make it so that school is not a place where whenever any misstep that they make is then, the problem is exacerbated, and they learn that school is not a safe place for them, that they can't, you know, be free to express themselves, be punished, and then that just kind of perpetuates the cycle of more punishment until they end up in this school-to-prison pipeline that students have to worry about. So we should be doing everything that we can to fix those issues.
Okay, Marika.
Thank you. Let's go to Lisa Goff, maybe? Lisa, I think you have to unmute yourself if you want to speak. There you go.
Yes, I have unmuted myself. I'm not sure if you want to call me to come back. It's, I'm calling from the Transportation Department.
Okay, leave your name right there. We'll be back in a few minutes to you, okay? Let's go to let's go to Emma, maybe next?
Emma, you're unmuted?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm gonna just your name and see your residence.
My name is Emma Narcos, and I'm a Worcester resident, and I'm here also to speak in favor of the petition from Racism Free Worcester Public Schools. I just want to start off by responding to something another speaker said, that one person has said that they published a false narrative and that it got through, that being fact check. There are 361 posts on the Racism Free Worcester Public School page, so even if one of those was fabricated, there are still 360 posts. So I think trying to discredit students who are speaking up for them, themselves, and the safety of others is really significant. I would also say that numerous of them mentioned similar details. There was one math teacher from Worcester Tech that was mentioned over five times. So just in terms of someone that's studied and researched sexual violence and sociology, there seem to be very credible patterns of the same details, but I don't think that it's at all appropriate to be calling into question these students who are bravely speaking out about issues in the school. I also just want to specifically speak in favor of some of the demands. There are, all of them, I think, are amazing, but I want to just specifically call attention to the inclusive dress policy, the mandatory health and consent classes, as well as cultural competency training for faculty and staff, ethnic studies curriculum, and diversity counselors. I'm in college now, graduate school, but I still remember how hard high school was, just the social environment, not even to take into account now a global pandemic. But it is crucial that students feel safe and respected at school, and having unequal dress code policies, or dress code policies that shame students for their body types that are enforced differently based on students' race or body types is completely inappropriate and sexualizes students who are just there to learn. I think that has no place in the schools. I also think as there's been so many issues raised around sexual harassment within the school system, that having mandatory health and consent classes would be really helpful just to empower students and give them the language to discuss consent. And also, that's just really basic health information, and I find it very disturbing that that's not been offered already as someone that is involved in public health.
Thank you, Emma. I appreciate it. Okay, let's go to, is it Emily, maybe?
I think Elena, please state your phone name and city residence.
Hi, my name is Elena Cruz, and I'm a resident of Worcester. I am also a public educator at an elementary school here in Worcester, and I wanted to speak in support of the petition on Agenda Item 7. As so many people have so eloquently said, all of these demands are so important for our students to feel safe and to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline. I am very much in support of an ethnic. I am very much in support of an ethnic studies curriculum um so that our students feel fully represented and um that their studies apply to them and are relevant um i- in addition to all the other suggestions put forth by this petition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next one is Emily. Tongue quest?
Hello.
Hi, Emily.
My name is Emily Tongwest. I'm a resident of Worcester. Um, I also teach high school English um in Worcester Public Schools. And I am calling in support of Item Seven. As an English teacher, I could not be more excited about this Instagram page. Um, I started following it right in the beginning of summer. And just the fact that a group of students and alumni would spend their summer dedicated to journalism and talking with their peers and um putting that information out in an accessible way, um, I think is exactly what we want of our students in Worcester Public Schools. We want our students to be critical um of the environment that they're in um and then take action, take tangible action. Um, so I am so grateful that we have been given this gift. It is a gift to receive feedback. And our students have so clearly laid out what they would like from us, and um I happen to agree with everything that they're demanding. But even if you don't, um, it's, you know, it's it's really crucial to listen to our students. And um, you know, I'm, I'm young. I'm not saying you're not, but you know, we've all had different times out of high school, you know, it's been a while, maybe. Um, obviously, your youthful glows are telling me something else. Um, but
You saved yourself.
We got to, we gotta listen to the young people here. Um, they're kind of screaming from the top of their lungs right now. And um, I think all we can do is, is hear them out. So thank you so much.
Well said, Emily. Thank you. Okay, let's go to, who haven't we heard from?
So we got Vicki Grinsky?
Yeah, Vicki.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Vicki. Is your name and see your residence?
Uh, my name is Vicki Grzinski. I am a resident of Worcester. Um, I work at a local public university. Um, I've been in Worcester for about four years, and I just want to call and echo support. Um, I think the students speak the loudest and have the most important voices, but I'd like to amplify them as a community member. Um, I'm calling in support of Agenda Item Seven, and I support all of the Racism Free Worcester Public Schools eight demands. Um, we have to enact all of these. They're all really important. It's hard to pick one to highlight. And I really urge you all to take this petition into consideration. I really, like, our public schools need uh more support, more funding, more comprehensive educational practices. Um, so I just want to echo all of the demands from the uh the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. We'll go to Monaya Casey Johnson, maybe next?
Um, they do not have the right version of Zoom, so I cannot let them talk.
How about, uh, is it Pong next?
Um, Pong, you're unmuted. Please state your full name.
Um, my name is Fang Nan. I am one of the organizers of Racism Free Worcester Public Schools. I am a Worcester Public Schools alum. I'm calling in support of Agenda Item Seven to demand ethnic studies to be adopted district-wide with students and their families' voices centered on the decision-making and curriculum development. Worcester Public Schools is seventy percent students of color, and the experiences that former and current students have voiced in Racism Free Worcester Public Schools page have demonstrated a clear lack of inclusion of diverse histories in our schools and curriculum. According to Dr. Thomas D. and Emily Penner, who wrote the 2017 Causal Effect of Cultural Relevance, students in San Francisco Unified School District who were at risk in the eighth grade made a two-point GPA improvement in the ninth grade after taking ethnic studies courses. Ethnic studies improve students' performance because it centers on the history and experiences of people of color. It honors students' identity, gives students the concept to understand and critique structural problems, and build collective power. The Boston Teachers Union is currently pushing for ethnic studies. There is already momentum here in the state, and Worcester Public School needs to develop and adopt ethnic studies now. And I want to speak on the fake post that was um submitted. Racism Worcester, Racism Free Worcester created an undercode system where students feel safe to talk about racist, sexist, homophobic incidents that happened in our school. If the district had an accountability system where students feel supported enough to come forward and feel safe doing so, then this Instagram page would not have been so popular and resonant to so many people. So I think that you should take all of these incidents very seriously and also listen to our petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Molly, maybe next?
Hi, um, my name is Molly Roach. Uh, I'm also an organizer of the petition and of the Instagram page. Um, I am calling in support of our petition. Um, specifically, the point I'd like to talk on is the mandatory health and consent classes. As an alum of of Worcester, I graduated Burncoat in 2016. I wasn't required to take health as a class because I was in the music magnet. Um, I took the class as an elective and ended up enduring very unscientific um health information, especially related to sexual health. Um, and knowing that Worcester and Massachusetts in general has a very high teen pregnancy rate and STI rate, um, Worcester being higher than the average, um, especially in minority students. Um, I think it's very important that we're getting, students are getting accurate, medically accurate sex um sexual health and education um and consent, because as we can see from the uh Instagram page, sexual assault is happening in our schools, sometimes from our teachers. So if we had adequate consent training, we might better know how to handle that. Um, so yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Molly. I appreciate it. Let's go to Diana.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Diana. Issue your name and see your residence.
Hi, my name is Diana Kong. I'm a resident of Worcester, and I just want to thank you all for coming out today. I'm one of the fifteen organizers of Racism Free Worcester Public Schools, and I wanted to touch on, um, I, I'm calling in support of all the demands of transferring WPS that Racism Free has put forward, but I want to talk specifically about the demand for restorative justice in schools. Um, I'm a very data-driven person, so I just want to touch on a couple of things published by um the Strategic Plan of Worcester that I find really concerning. Um, so there being um seventy percent students of color within Worcester Public Schools, but eighty percent of youth of color being disciplined for non-drug, non-violent, and non-criminal offenses in Worcester Public Schools, which clearly shows pertinent in equity in the discipline. So I also want to dive into these more concerning statistics regarding the suspension rates of youth of um youth in Worcester Public Schools, specifically there being um the rate of suspension of white youth in Worcester being three point one, while the rates of suspension for Native American youth being quadrupled that, and the rate of Latinx and multirecent.
Well, Diana, are you still here?
Hello?
Well, Diana, you cut out one second. Oh, you, you're back. Go ahead.
Okay, um, where did I cut out uh again? Sorry.
About the, about the, uh, you went to the uh, uh, I think, uh, what Tina actually, I think you said.
Oh, yes. Um, so I want to point out this really bad racial bias in terms of the rate of Latinx youth being suspended being nearly doubled that, uh, actually more than double that of white students. So um, given this racial inequity, I think that having restorative justice practices being utilized within Worcester Public Schools is necessary because as we can see, the suspension rates are disproportionately affecting youth of color. And furthermore, um, I want to talk about Demand Eight, which asks for diversity counselors, which would be this new proposed position that would be alleviating the task load um of guidance counselors and teachers in order to create a permanent position that is tasked with supporting the psychological, physical, and emotional needs of youth of color and other marginalized youth. As we know, teachers and counselors and other staff members in Worcester Public Schools, they deal with quite a bit and are constantly working to better the conditions of students constantly. So if there was a permanent position that was tasked with these needs of students particularly, imagine how much better the well-being of not only the students, but also the teachers and the counselors and every single member of Worcester Public Schools would be. Having this position is pretty vital in order to sustain the continuous um equity within Worcester Public Schools, but also to, once again, prioritize the mental health and just health in general of not only students but teachers.
Okay. Thank you, Diana. Uh, but let's just go right down the list there. We're gonna have some transportation. We have like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about nine people left. We're gonna close this up. So let's start with Robert, then we'll move on from there. We have gone as close this up about twenty past five anyways. Um, so Robert, go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna go on to the next person.
Okay, Kara. Kara? I think Kara spoke. You're a free Kara? Okay, we're gonna go on.
I did not yet.
Oh, you didn't? I'm sorry. Go ahead. My fault.
Sorry. So my name is Kara Machano. I'm a resident of the city of Worcester and a student at the medical school here. I'm calling in support of um Agenda Item Seven, the petition from Racism Free WPS. Um, as a medical student, I'm very concerned about the health and safety of our students, their families, and our community members. So especially wanted to call out, uh, I think, the demands from the petition related to mental health competency, health and consent classes, the inclusive dress policy, ethnic studies, and uh no cops in schools. So thank you for your consideration of the petition, and, you know, I hope that the students in your district feel heard and supported by their board.
Thank you, Kara. Appreciate it. Um, let's go to Nancy Caswell. Nancy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Nancy Caswell, I'm a resident of Clinton, Mass, and I teach music system-wide. But I'm here as a um an EAW member just to ask um why the school committee feels that three feet of distance is okay for our students. I personally don't understand when in the grocery store we have to maintain six feet apart. I understand that there's a huge problem with transportation, but I was wondering if you were gonna be accepting the invitation of the transportation people to ride three feet apart with students, some of which will not be wearing masks.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We are going next to Marie. Marie, or speak? Marie Burgett? I'm not sure.
I believe so.
Okay, Jeremy spoke. I know that. Lisa Goff was waiting for us, I think.
Hello, can you hear me?
You go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, so my name is Lisa Goff. I am a bus driver in the Transportation Department um of Worcester Public Schools. And um as a bus driver, we are all very concerned regarding our safety. Um, the distancing that is proposed on the bus. Um, everywhere we go, um, whether it's the grocery store, whether it's standing in line to get into the store at Walmart, because they're only allowing so many people in the building still. Everywhere you go, there's, there's tape on the floors telling everyone that we all need to stay distanced at six feet. Um, and even in the schools, at the bus stops, everywhere that Desi has um told people, everything's six feet in the classroom, um, I don't feel comfortable. Um, and, and also my colleagues don't feel comfortable with a three-foot distancing on the school buses. Um, we are gonna be in an enclosed space, um, and six feet is, I'm, is what we really need and want. Um, three feet to us just feels um very unsafe. Um, and that is one of our concerns. And another concern is, um, I, I am also a parent of a special needs child. Um, I don't live in the district, but I have a lot of knowledge um as for um special needs students, um, what their needs are. Um, and we're very concerned about um the safety as of our monitors who may have to um get in close contact with the special needs students. Um, because some of the students, um, because of their disability are unable to um get in their seats, um, put their seat belts on, um, things like that, and our monitors are gonna have to help them with that. I want to know what the district is doing to help our monitors stay safe, what additional um PPEs are being provided to our monitors um to keep them safe and to also keep the students safe. Um, so that, those are, those are a couple of our concerns.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate that, Lisa. Let's go to Nancy. Nancy, or speak? I don't know.
I believe so. One sec.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Jeremy spoke. Go in. Are you all set, go in?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Jeremy, as I said, Ms. Case, Monaya, did you speak? I don't remember now. Monaya?
No, I haven't spoken yet.
Okay, go ahead. List your name and see your residence. Uh, where'd she go? We lost her? Hang on. I'm used, uh, there you go. Monaya, you're up again.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Monaya Casey Johnson. I live in Worcester, Massachusetts, and I am currently a student attending Burncoat High School. Um, I would just like to say that the Racism Free WPS Instagram page has honestly very much helped me in a way where I too can share my stories. Um, and I find that the fact that the Worcester Public Schools Instagram page has also been tagged on every single post. And on my part, I have seen them really say absolutely nothing. And it's almost sickening because you'd think that the Worcester Public Schools would want to change such such just scary scenarios and situations. And I am glad that this Zoom meeting is happening now because I feel that this, these situations need to be taken to a new level of seriousness because if there are so many posts, it's scary to think about. And to address the false story that was made, I really just want to say that even if it was false, the Worcester Public Schools should do something about it, because if it was a post about racism, racism has been in our school systems for years. And quite honestly, it just needs to not be there. And as a student who has to go to school by law, it should be the most comfortable place that I should be. I should be able to call my school a second home. However, I'm honestly afraid to be there because of the stories that I've heard. So I really hope that something is done in the future, and I will continue to support the Instagram page with all my heart and all my being. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Alexander Tar, is that? We have about ten more.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to, I, we, I know we have a student on here, Lois.
Okay, oh, okay, Lois. Lois?
Oh, this is um, um, her mother, actually. I think it probably came up as her. My name is Maya Desai. Um, and I have, I live in Worcester. Uh, I have a child at both Burncoat High and Middle Schools. And I just want to, in general, state my support for the Agenda Items and Petition from um Race Racism Free Worcester Public Schools. And I would just add, and I didn't know this, but that um I understand that maybe there was some Instagram post that may not have seemed um truthful or accurate, but as parents of a kid in the school, I can tell you the, that we had to navigate a difficult situation um that we, that was around racial and sexual harassment at the school. And um we didn't even put it on the page, and so that there are plenty of stories out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Alexander?
Yes, my name is Alex Tar. I'm a resident of Worcester, and I teach at a local college. Um, I'm calling in support of the WPS or the Racism Free WPS. I'm calling in support of the WPS, or the Racism Free WPS petition. And especially like to speak to the agenda item on the petition number seven to have a mandatory ethnic studies curriculum. I come from a college where the ethnic studies curriculum was fought for in one in the 1960s and 70s. So I think this is really a place where Worcester could catch up to the rest of the country. I've been pretty shocked at my students who come from Worcester Public Schools, and their sort of lack of knowledge around issues pertaining to ethnic studies, around racism, around anti-racism. These are things that I think both white students and students of color could really benefit from and would help them become better members of college community and also obviously the community of Worcester. So again, I'm calling to speak in favor of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander. Marsha Ford?
Yes. Hi, my name is Marsha Ford. I'm with the Transportation Department, and I had two questions. One, other districts are giving hazard pay for their bus drivers and monitors. Why is the city not willing to accommodate our bus drivers and monitors where we're being put on the front line and transporting these students? And two, if it is so safe for us to get on the bus at three feet distance, why is it not safe for us to have a meeting in person for negotiations?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Gregory Jones?
Hi there. My name is Gregory Jones. I'm a resident and teacher in Worcester. I wanted to call in support of the petition. Students are stakeholders in education, and we ask them to be involved all the time. In fact, we get frustrated when they're not involved. Students are telling you what they need to happen. They're telling you what they need for their education to be effective. And they're also telling us that we've been ignoring them for a long time. So I think it's time to listen, and we need to take some action here. We were even lucky enough for them to tell us what we should do. And as a teacher, I agree with all of the points that they've made. I don't want a police officer chasing kids down if they cut my class. I want a system of restorative justice, and right now, it's clear that our punishments are not equitable. And I want students to feel, you know, comfortable wearing whatever they want in the classroom. I want students to know how healthy relationships work, and I want them to know about consent. I would love mental health training. I really love that, actually. I would also love cultural competency training. That would be incredible if you guys could do that for me. Why aren't we already instituting an ethnic studies curriculum? And how do we not have diversity counselors? Our district is 70% people of color. We should be the leaders on this stuff. I think that Worcester is the perfect place to make these changes. And the students are telling us that we need to really do it. So let's get to work and take some real action here.
Thank you, Gregory. Let's go to Tina Mansfield.
Hi, my name is Tina Mansfield. I live in Spencer. I work in the Transportation Department. And I have two questions. Have all parents and guardians been notified that they are using the minimal guidance of three feet? And the second question is, will you accept our invitation to ride on a bus at three feet? Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Okay, Shailen Clark, you're next.
Hi, I'm Shailen Clark. I'm a resident of Auburn, and I work for the Transportation Department as a bus driver. I'm just curious as to why three feet of social distance is okay for our students, where everywhere else is six feet at the bus stop, classrooms, you name it, everywhere is six feet. And also, will you be accepting our invitation to ride on a bus at three feet social distance?
Okay. Thank you, Shailen. Brenda?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor. School Committee, my name is Brenda Wensel, and I live in Clinton. I work for the Transportation Department. I'm a school bus driver. And I'm just gonna state that I have concerns also with the three-foot distancing from the Desi. When CDC has the minimum of six foot, I myself, as well as many other drivers, monitors, are considered high risk. And it's really not acceptable. I know that in the school buildings, you've accepted the six foot. For classrooms, classrooms are pretty big, open areas. If you compare them to a school bus, I myself drive a small school bus, and you wanna put a certain amount of children in there, and the spacing is not adequate. Again, you're gonna be invited, the whole school committee, if you would like, to come and take a ride on a school bus. And feel for yourself, the three-foot distancing, if you consider that to be comfortable, if you would wanna ride on that bus, or children that you have, your grandchildren, your own children, and see if you think that's good. And then I have another concern also. And that also has to do with the distancing, again, of course. You know, again, you say that the three-foot distancing is gonna be acceptable. I don't find it acceptable. This is my life, the life of my coworkers, the life of their families, the life of our students, and the life of their families. And it's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Let's go to Mrs. Harvey.
There we go. So I was just calling in for two things. The first is that the thing about the bus drivers and only three feet of distance is terrifying to me. I can't even imagine being on a rolling little tiny area like that and not being able to, you know, as a driver, not being able to see what the kids are doing. And I don't know if the monitors, I've heard rumor, I don't know if this is true, that not every bus has a monitor, because there weren't enough. But not being able to know what the kids are doing when it comes to your own health and safety, that's terrifying. So I would really love to see you guys go on there and see what they're dealing with. So take up their invitation, please. The second thing is, just as a classroom teacher, I am very grateful that you allowed us the option to decide whether or not we should work from the school buildings or our homes. Being a person with a bunch of different risk factors myself, I appreciate that a whole lot. I do have to say, I remain a little bit terrified that after the commissioner's little scare last week, that maybe that things are gonna change last minute. And I don't know if you can give us three assurances that that isn't gonna happen, like the day before kids go back to school. But that remains something that is keeping me awake at night because I am so grateful for the decision that you made, but I'm terrified that, you know, that is not going to stay in place.
Okay.
So I don't know if you can comment on that?
We usually don't comment in this time, but I'll tell you, I don't plan on changing our policy. I think the school committee does, so. Okay. Yahir Rodriguez? So just let Mrs. Harvey know, the school committee does not plan on changing its policy if the teacher's having the option of going in and out of the school. Okay. Okay, we have, we lost, I think we just lost the person there, Bob, but we go Melinda Martin? I'm gonna wrap it up. We got one more after this, we'll wrap it up.
Melinda Martin, you cannot speak because of your Zoom client.
Okay, let's go there. Yahir Rodriguez, she was next.
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Hi, my name is Jajira Rodriguez. I'm from Webster. And I will be speaking in Spanish because I feel that it's important that people know what we're fighting for when it comes to buses. So I hope you guys have your translator, and I appreciate it. Thank you. So desde marzo, los TDC nos han aconsejado constantemente que nos queremos a menos de seis pies de distancia de personas con las que vivimos en nuestro hogar en espacio cerrado. Mientras en la orientación de DES indica que de tres a seis, queremos saber por qué ustedes han elegido utilizar la guía de seguridad mínima cuando se trata de la salud y la seguridad no solamente de los conductores pero de los monitores, estudiantes y sus familias. Los estudiantes que están transportando, los conductores y los monitores merecen seis pies de distancia para su seguridad y otros. En esta condición, en la mayoría de los otros distritos han ofrecido un pago de peligro a sus conductores y monitores. Hasta ahora, ustedes han dicho que no a la paga de peligro. Los conductores y monitores merecen ser compensados por asumir un riesgo tan grave. No solamente para ellos, pero estamos hablando de cuando ellos regresen a su hogar. Tienen niños, tienen esposos, esposas. Y creo que debemos ser conscientes que nosotros tomaríamos la mejor decisión para el bienestar de nuestra familia. Y esperamos que ustedes entiendan eso y se pongan en la posición de estos conductores y sus monitores. Y piensen que si ustedes estuvieran en esta posición, ustedes harían lo que fuera para mantener su familia segura. So les estamos invitando a que tomen este, el autobús a tres pies de distancia. A veces yo siento, yo pues me gusta ver las cosas porque es ama, yo aprendo mucho más cuando veo. So creo que sería importante para ustedes, antes de tomar una decisión clara y constante, que ustedes vayan, estén en el autobús y vean por ustedes mismos si ustedes sienten que es seguro para los monitores, los conductores, los estudiantes y su familia. Gracias por su atención. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Yahir. Okay, we'll go to our next speaker, Cynthia Cicadon Melonson.
Hi, I apologize for the first time I spoke. Yeah, I live in, I'm Cynthia C. Kamalanson. I live in Leicester. And I'm also a driver aged to the physically handicapped. And I was just wondering why, when the students are at bus stops, they're supposed to be six feet apart. And when they get on the bus, they're three feet apart. And some of them, especially on the mid-sized bus, they can have a doctor's note and not wear a mask. So if they sneeze, it's gonna get all over everybody. Well, not everybody. And also, to me, that's, they're sending mixed messages, especially to the big buses, being six feet outside, and then when you're in the inside, you're three feet. Then, like, we would like to invite all the school committees and the people that we've been bargaining with from the aged to the physically handicapped, the bus, the big bus drivers and the monitors, to be on one of those buses and then have somebody not wear a mask that they say they have a medical issue and see how it would feel being closed in like that.
Okay.
Thank you very much for listening. And I'd like to thank everybody for all what you've been trying to do. I mean, no matter what you do, it's not gonna be perfect for everybody.
Well said, Cynthia. Thank you. Phoebe Ricker?
Uh, yeah, sorry, it's Phoebe, but...
Phoebe, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Um, I am, I live in Worcester currently. I'm also a youth group co-facilitator at a local organization. And I'd like to call in support of Racism Free WPS's eight demands on Agenda Item Seven. I think it's incredibly important that the students of color are supported in Worcester Public Schools so that they can succeed. And I think right now, the environment that Worcester Public Schools is creating is one that is extremely violent and unwelcoming to its students of color, its majority students of color. I don't know if any of you have read any of the stories on the Instagram page personally. I really, really encourage you to do so. There are a lot of really, really scary stories on there and stories that have been confirmed by the youth that I work with personally in their own stories that they bring up to me as a trusted adult, as a mentor. Yeah, so I really encourage you to take these demands seriously and to take action and not just to recognize that they are issues, but to actually do something about it and put your money where your mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you, Phoebe. We have two more speakers, and that's when we're gonna close this part. We have Michelle and Melinda. Michelle, you're up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Michelle. List your name and say your residence.
Um, yeah, my name is Michelle Puch. I am from Worcester. I'm a WPS alum. And I'm calling in support of Agenda Item Seven specifically to, well, I support all of it, but I'm specifically gonna talk about the mandatory health and consent classes. This mandatory education, it should be, we should have mandatory health and consent classes beginning in elementary school and continue through high school. And I would like for the consent education to be taught by the affirmative consent model instead of the abstinence model right now. I don't want any more abstinence model kind of education just because it doesn't have any education around contraception methods and options, including birth control and condoms, emergency contraception such as Plan B and abortion. I would like you to instead consider the Making Proud Choices model of sex education instead. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, our final speaker will be Melinda. Melinda, you're up. Go ahead. List your name and say your residence.
Hi, Melinda Martin. I'm a resident of the city of Worcester. I'm a parent. I'm also an educator. And the first thing I wanna bring up is, the first device I was on was a Chromebook from the Worcester Public Schools that I was given to better enable me to hear meetings and to do my trainings. And I couldn't get on and speak. I have now be on my cellphone. So the devices you guys are giving out are not conducive to your meetings. That's my first point, because I'm kind of aggravated that I'm using a device from the Worcester Public Schools that are supposed to help me do my trainings and everything, and I'm not able to speak at a Zoom meeting. My second point is to talk about the transportation concerns. As a parent, I will certainly not put my child on an enclosed area less than six feet apart. The aerosol germs spread so much more inside. You're putting students inside a bus, possibly with a monitor, possibly without a monitor, and a driver, and you're endangering them. You're seriously endangering them by only putting the bare minimum. Desi does guidelines. They're guidelines. They're not etched in stone. And you can certainly go above and beyond those guidelines to show the drivers and monitors that you truly care about their health, their family's health, and their well-being. And I really hope that you do take them up on that invitation to ride three feet spaced apart while someone does not have a mask on. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, we are going to go back to the agenda. We are gonna take the petition, we're gonna separate them, we're gonna go cop-freeze the school, we're gonna send that to governance, restorative justice for disciplined students to governance, inclusive dress code to governance. Let's see, mandatory health and consent classes, the teaching and learning, cultural competency training and faculty staff, the teachers and learning, mental health competency training and faculty, the teachers and learning, along with teachers and learning, we're gonna send ethnic studies curriculum and diversity councils, and to finance an operation with environmental action transparency. So send those committees. I know the chair said you would take those, so that's why we're sending them there. I think a lot of those are in the committee already. So motion, Helen, collectively on a roll call?
Ms. Bianca Area?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Yes. Mr. Montfredo? Miss?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo? Yeah. Ms. Novick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so next we are going up is Superintendent, let's see here.
138.4.
What'd you say, Helen? 138.4?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna, yep, you're right. Response to the administration to the following motions from the 21 budget. Response to administration requests to provide a detailed report on the legal costs and categories for servicing rendered for each firm. And request administration provide 11 locations of the SOA panels. So we are gonna do the budget here now, too, so. Mr. Foley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just trying to read the agenda and the screen at the same time. But I was surprised that actually the cost for Lamir Murphy was actually more than Sean Sweeney's firm. And I guess the question, first of all, is can the administration explain a little more about the high cost for student assessment, evaluation, placement would be?
Who's that? Who wants to answer that? Ms. Penander or Brian, Alan?
Nope. So a lot of it was the, so Mr. Sweeney did not have negotiations last year. But as you know, we have seven contracts now to do, so that price will be...
but as you know, we have seven contracts now to do, so that price will be up over pages price for this year. So we have DOJ. The DOJ is very expensive. There's a lot of meetings with them on our L population. And there's some civil, there were civil rights meetings, a lot of special ed meetings, and she's the expert on that. So that's the cost of, the majority of all that has to do with special ed and DOJ.
So those for special education issues where we're going to mediation with families or just bringing the, her, bringing the law firm in for consultation for a number of different special ed?
I think I could ask Kay Seal to give you some more information on that.
Ms. Seal.
Hi, good evening and through the chair. The, our legal bills are itemized, so they're broken down based on level of services. And for the most part, the majority of services that Attorney Tobin has provided to the district as Maureen Benindia did share, has to do with a lot of litigation with DOJ, but also through our mediation and PRS process and also through BSCA. We've had quite a few hearing requests and we've also had quite a few PRS, which is program resolution services, which is another layer of mediation through DSCA. So a lot of the services is not just consulting with us in terms of legal matters, but also there has been some consultation with us as a result of the pandemic and also as a result of compensatory services as well, as the guidance had changed through DESI. So a lot of those services have really impacted us in the area of compliance.
Thank you, Ms. Seal. I guess what would be under miscellaneous and site-based topics? Can we have a couple of examples of what that might be?
I'd have to look directly at the bill. That might be a presentation. I'd have to look at the bill. The bill is itemized. So, you know, I believe also you have access to that or you can have access to that, but I'd have to look and see under what date and what was actually done under the area of miscellaneous.
OK, it might not even be in special education, might be somewhere.
Yeah, correct. It might be correct.
Just seems like a large miscellaneous number. I guess the last comment I'll make, I just can't resist it, is that $10,000 here for homeschooling costs. Like that's a, it's a cost we probably could have avoided. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's fine.
Thank you. See, Ms. Novick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair, the administration, which of these is the Department of Justice?
I couldn't tell you exactly which ones they are right now. I certainly can give you that, but that's mainly what Attorney Tobin has been working with us on and some training of staff also on updates, legal updates, Title IX work and 504s.
So my understanding is that, that the Murphy-Lamir Murphy contract is for dealing specifically with student services. So in addition to what Mr. Foley has already indicated, which is that the whole kerfluffle over homeschooling was an unnecessary expense and we could have used the $10,000. The records request, which I remember actually seeing even last fall, decisions that were coming back from Murphy-Lamir Murphy that actually had to do with public records requests. Public records requests don't have any business going to the solicitor who's handling these records. The public records request are something that we get as a result of us being a public body. That's actually a, something which is appropriately handled through the city solicitor. So it seems to me, Mr. Chair, that in addition to what Mr. Foley has already noted, part of what we have here is a misuse of the contracts that we as the school committee have with these attorneys. And the charges that the city already puts, essentially occurs against us, to us in part are because of the city solicitor. And those are things that are appropriately handled through the city solicitor's office. So it would be appropriate for the administration to be redirecting that legal counsel, legal consult to the appropriate legal authority on that, which isn't Murphy-Lamir. And that would, among other things, save us some money, but it also would potentially get us better legal advice because that's actually a specialization, obviously, of the city solicitor by virtue of his position.
Could I jump in there? So that actually isn't true. Those are not public record reports. Those are legal representation from legal, from individual students. So if we have a FOIA, it does not go to Paige Tobin. So that information is not correct, if that's what's, what you're thinking. She's only used for individual students and that is exactly one of the jobs that she has.
Mr. Chair, I've actually seen the, the letterhead on refusals of FOIA requests. So be that as it may, let's make sure that those are going to the city solicitor rather than anywhere else.
I know, thank you. I know for a fact, well, you should all be going to the city solicitor. So I think they track them all and because they have to report. I know, so it's supposed to get small, whether or not maybe it's special circumstances, I'm not sure. But, OK, so what you want, so we can file these or you're all set or anybody else?
No, I just want to, I'm mayor. I just want to say that I think that we, we are very lucky to have Attorney Paige Tobin work with us. She legal, she has saved the city of Worcester probably millions of dollars. She is doing exactly what the contract with the school committee says. And they have a very long history, even before I became superintendent of working for the school district. And she is very well respected in her community and also by DESI and also by every person in Worcester Public Schools that has worked with her. I think it's really important that everybody does know that.
I know that. So it's, I think we agree with that. Let's, we have two good attorneys, we're lucky attorneys we have. Let's go. Can you file those items? Is that all right for everybody? OK, Helen, motion to file.
Thank you. Ms. Biancaria.
Ms. Biancaria is a yes.
Mrs. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo.
Yes.
Ms. Novick.
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
Yes. Next is response to administration request to work with the community. I think I'm in the right one. Yep. Social agencies, interfaith groups to reach out to parents about signing up to preschool and kindergarten classes for 2021 school year. Anybody on that one? John, Montfredo?
Yeah, I thank administration for the backup and I do hope that there was a great deal of outreach from the community to assist parents in enrolling their child in preschool and, and in the kindergarten. And does administration have any information on the enrollment figures?
Ms. Penander, Madam Superintendent? I think that'd be you.
Where are we with it? Yeah, Mark. I may have just had a few seconds there trying to get that click. I think Mark Berfium is actually on. I probably give us an update on that from pick.
Thank you.
OK, I don't know if, is Mark in this group here? I'm not sure. Paul, can you get Mark in here?
I don't see him.
No, he's not. He's an attendee or in the panel.
Oh, he's not on it? OK.
We can get it done next week then.
We can get an update for you on that. I just know that the online registration is going very well and the high schools, you can still register for the middle and high schools online also. And then the paper is put together at pick and brought up to each of the schools. You can also now at this point also call the middle school, the high school and make an appointment to come in to register your child. So we have expanded now how you register.
Thank you.
Thank you. OK, so we can file that and get an update in the future. Roll call.
Ms. Biancaria.
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo.
Yes.
Ms. Novick.
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
Yes. Next is request that the administration study feasibility collaborating with community partners to set up a person in learning laboratories for parents, guidance to bring their children on remote learning days. Mrs. Clancy.
Wait, did we, we skipped a page.
Did we skip one? I wasn't ready.
OK, never mind. I did skip a page. I go, OK, you guys caught me. Request administration of the following motions that the administration partner with the neighborhood centers in order to get the information out to parents, provide an update on Chromebook funding and distribution, survey parents in order to assess their level of comfort with computers, with helping with the children, consider the hours of teaching and audit to provide evening and after-school classes to those at-risk students who work during school time. OK, anybody on this? I thought we'd do, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Any, Ms. Novick? Tracy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. So I had several questions. The, there was a mention in this of the reception, which is announced last week by the department of an additional, I think it's $2.5 million coming in on a tech grant. Aside from the allocation that's actually mentioned within the report, how is the rest of the grant? What is the plan of the administration in terms of allocating the rest of the grant, please?
Madam Superintendent?
Up to the chair. I believe that we decided to do that complete Chromebooks. I'll ask Mr. Allen to jump on to verify that.
Mr. Allen.
Can Ms. Novick repeat the question?
Sure. The, my understanding from the announcement from the department was that the Worcester Public Schools were receiving $2.5 million as part of the department grant. The report tells us that 1.6, 1.46 million of that is proposed for Chromebook use and I wondered what the allocation was for the rest of the grant, to be somewhere around a million dollars, I would guess.
iPads.
OK. In addition, in addition to the iPads that we already have on order through the chair?
No, so we're looking at the, all of the federal stimulus money kind of in package total and using the monies within the grants as most appropriate.
OK.
So it's a combination of this grant and then what was needed from the CARES Act to make up the balance.
OK, thank you. I assume at some point we're probably, at some point it would be good to have a report. I don't need to make a motion right now, but that actually sort of ran through all of the sort of additional kinds of, some of it was, I guess, all of its grant, including the 225 from the governor, and delineate how that actually has been allocated. I won't ask for it now because I know we're still figuring some of that out, but I would appreciate.
Those grants will be submitted for your approval once we get them cleared through DESE.
Yes. OK. Thank you. And then the mention of the Caregivers Academy that's on here. The, the, part of the concern here is of course the, the lack of technological understanding of some parents. And so webinar is sort of a good second step. How exactly is the Caregivers Academy being put together through the charity administration?
Madam Superintendent?
Well, that, we actually had a great meeting yesterday with lots of community agencies on the Caregivers Academy and a lot of positive information on it. And it's kind of, I don't know if you're asking about the website. It's gone to translation now. And as soon as it's done, hopefully by Monday next week, it'll be on the website. And it does take parents through every single part of technology. Did this work? If it didn't, this is what you do. It's, it's really an unbelievable, amazing website and service for, for families.
Right, so thank you. Well, that, and that's sort of, again, I think a good second step. But we had talked before about the fact that we do have some families for whom the sort of, how are you turning this on? How are you navigating to the web? How, like those things are step by step. And I know that there was a mention that there have been, there's been outreach from various community groups offering various kinds of sort of one-to-one personal kinds of coaching. Is that something we're taking people up on? And if so, how are we running that and how is that being organized through the chair?
I know Sarah is helping to moderate today, but I was wondering if she might be able to come in and explain that to more clearly.
Sure, through the chair. So the, the first step was getting the resources and getting the site and showing it to the community members and getting their input. The next step is the dissemination plan and that's what we met about yesterday. So we have, can, you can hear me, right?
I can hear you, yes.
OK, I saw you making emotions like with your hands.
I've got kids doing things in the background.
So, so there's many different layers to this. So we really have been working with Worcester together and there's, you know, maybe like 80 or 100 organizations that go to those meetings and we've invited them and we will continue to invite them. But part of the dissemination plan is working with community groups. So we're doing large webinar trainings with community groups, but then also individual trainings. So on the website, there will be some schedules for those, but we're really working with the community groups to help them reach their families out there, that the families are comfortable going to, whether it's like a neighborhood organization or a faith-based organization or a cultural organization. So we're really working with all them. And so when they request a, a training, then some of the technology and digital learning coaches will help them. I'm also happy to announce that we hired three new technology coaches. One of them speaks Spanish and Portuguese fluently and one of them speaks Chinese and Spanish fluently. So they will also be really helping families navigate some of those resources as well. So we're happy that we added them to our team. They started this week. So it's going to be a community-wide effort. Some of the organizations are looking at, you know, working with college students and going through the court process with them to be able to help families. So there's not just one avenue we're going through. We're trying to partner with as many people as we can.
That's good to hear. Thank you. I appreciate that because I know that, as you say, this is one and I've seen some, several districts that are essentially putting out an all-call to ensure that they're actually getting families online. And we can only communicate with them through technology if we can actually get them on the technology. Thank you. The, the only other thing is that there, I was glad to see, as I know several of my colleagues had mentioned this earlier or in other meetings, the, the discussion of the evening courses for high school students and there being essentially another option, as we know that there are certainly students who have family commitments and other kinds of things. I do want to say again, and I, looking at the agenda, I believe we'll be taking this up in governance once the attendance policy goes there, that we do need another plan, a Plan B for our elementary school students who can't necessarily be sitting in front of their computer at 8:30 because of family constraints. And I'm not expecting an answer for that tonight. I think that we have a, we have a policy issue there more than anything else, which we'll need to take up. But I was glad to see that we are moving ahead on the secondary option because I think that's very important. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Biancaria.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I would like to just discuss briefly. Youth at risk students. As I have mentioned numerous times, the advantages of taking a look at special programs to fit the youth at risk. And it says here that a DESI grant for Saturday and school vacation support. But I'm wondering what we're doing presently. Are we looking at Saturdays starting when? And is this going to be Zoom or is this going to be at a location where they would stop by? You know, social distance and so on permitted. However, I do have some concerns about how we're going to handle kids that are supporting their families and youth at risk.
That's different. OK, up through the chair. So this, I just want to make sure that we separate what the commissioner has said about the school day. He has not waived it on the fact that students have to attend their regular school day to get their credits. As a matter of fact, their way of, the way the state is giving us to record attendance is what's happening during the school day only and for classes during the school day, attendance has to be taken. And that's how we have to report it. So these programs that we're talking about are not to replace the expectation that kids are attending their regular school day. They're, they're additional programs. So this was a grant that we applied for actually before COVID. And it was for providing additional, not in place. And it was for providing additional, not in place of the, that they have to go to work. They, they can't go to work during the school day. They have to go to school during the school day. The Commissioner said that very clearly to our superintendents. So these are evening classes, support classes to support the work that they do during the school day, to provide the extra support so they can pass their classes. And these are, originally, they were made, when we originally applied for them, it was going to be in schools, right? Because we didn't have COVID at the time. But now that we have COVID, they're going to be Zoom, exactly as you said, Diana, they're going to be Zoom.
Okay, so they'll all be Zoom?
Yes. Until we go back to, if we go back to school, right? In some shape or form, then we would be able to try in person with six feet between everybody, yes.
Okay. So when we're looking at the youth at risk that were going, that, that were in enrollment in our alternative schools, presently, as we've, as of today, as we move forward, we are anticipating that the students who had employment in the morning and so on that weren't attending school as a regular timeframe would now be attending school under a regular timeframe and not working. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. The only difference would be your students attend the Joe Kreamer program because there is a, those aren't ninth graders, right? They're mostly 11th to 12th graders. So those kids, we would still have the evening program and the returnee program. So as you know, the evening program starts for kids at 2:30 and goes to 6:30, right? And then the returnee program also. So we would still run those programs. At-risk ninth graders, they're, they usually go to Challenge and Reach, right? Or, you know, they're in their ninth grade teams. We really like to keep them in their ninth grade teams and bring all the support around them in their regular high school before we would like to put them in an alternative setting. So, so at-risk ninth graders, you know, our plan is for them to stay at their home schools and get the support they need there. And then if that, if it's not enough support and they need something more than the comprehensive high school would give them, those would be the students that would do Challenge and Reach. And I just want to also say that that is our group C, right? Students that we identified, that we really want to try to get back in our schools as soon as, you know, we can upgrade our ventilation systems. And so those kids would also, those, we want those at-risk kids, you know, in school for group C so we can provide those support services in person.
Has anyone, thank you. Has anyone been in contact with the students that would be enrolled in the 11th and 12th grade? And if they have been, do we have a number of students? Do we know during that school time? Will they be attending? Do they have the availability to do that? And if so, have they already received their Chromebooks?
So I talked about the Joe Kreamer Center. They have been contacting students. And those students are going to be on virtual also right now, right? Because there's no, there's nobody that isn't on virtual right now.
Right.
And Mr. Whalen was making plans to distribute the Chromebooks to those students.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Novak? Or Ms. McCullough?
Mr. Chair, can we, I don't want to interrupt, but if we could just get in writing whatever it is that the superintendent has heard from the Commissioner regarding attendance? Because that's actually in conflict with what I had made an official inquiry because I've actually been getting that because districts are setting policies around how attendance is being counted. The notion that every child is going to be sitting at a particular spot and be checked off in a box is something I was told was, was not something that, that districts need to be requiring. So if we could actually ask for the administration to get that directly from the department in writing, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll do, I guess, you want this in teaching and learning, this, these items? You want to file it?
Yeah.
Okay. We can file it. And, and also on Tracy Novak's motion, collectively on a roll call?
Ms. Bian Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next is Response to the Administration, Request to Provide an Update on the Number of IEP Students That Have Extended School Year Services, Receiving Remote Services at School or at Home During the Summer. Mr. Monfredo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly thank the administration for the backup. But I do hope, like everyone else, son, so that we're able to provide the needed assistance for our most vulnerable students. You know, obviously, we just discussed that as well. Is, is there any way of perhaps getting college students who are looking for, you know, work in agencies to, to assist in a tutoring setting?
Ms. Benanda?
Through the chair. We're talking about community agencies helping with homework, homework and those type of activities. Mr. Monfredo?
Yes, yeah.
So we have been having conversations. Today, I was having a conversation through text with Liz Hamilton for the Boys and Girls Club. And they're actually working on setting up a program so that they can do homework centers for students. And she's going on vacation next week. So the week after that, we're going to be having a meeting regarding it. So.
Yeah, I know we have a grant. Yeah. Yeah, I know we have a grant through, that we'll be discussing later, for vacation and summertime for our, our students, our most vulnerable students. But I was just wondering, is there anything else that we possibly do?
So right now, there's no funding for that, but does it mean that we're not reaching out to community agencies? There are something called PODs that are.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, reaching out.
Okay. We're reaching out to agencies asking or being part of that conversation. Commissioner did say that there were guidelines coming out regarding what, what a PODs and that there's a municipality that has to be overseeing them. We have not received any of that, that information yet. But once we do, I'll forward it to the school committee.
Thank you.
Okay.
Joe?
Ms. Clancy?
Yes. Through the chair to administration, I just have a question because it, the, the numbers, there just seemed like there was a significant difference between the students who are eligible for extended school year and who participated in extended school year. My first question is, is that something that we, are those numbers that we typically see? Or is it, you know, something that was different for the school year? And my second comment question is, you know, can we look at possibly, if it is something that we typically see, can we look at possibly, looking at how we're reaching the families and letting them know what is still available through the summer?
Okay.
Through the chair. I would basically talk to you about special education students?
Yeah, the ones who are, yes, special education.
Yes. So I'll ask Kaseel to answer that question.
Through the chair?
Yep, go ahead.
So there is a process. We do gather a report of all of our students that have ESY services on their IEPs. And as a result of that, we end up sending out notices to parents to find out if they will be attending extended school year services for the summer. This year, we, we have received a little bit more of a dip in regards to responses. And I think that may be in part to the fact that we were not providing direct services because of the pandemic. But when we do look at our attendance data for ESY, we do know that we have more students that are eligible for those services, but our enrollment does not usually match the enrollment number of students that are eligible. So we do see a difference in terms of number of students that are actually participating in extended school year services.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we can, motions to file this? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Bian Carrier? Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Bian Carrier is a yes.
Thank you.
Double yes. Let's go. Response to the Administration, Request to Provide an Update on District Plans. Did I miss one? Nope. District plans to conduct kindergarten screening for the start of the 2021 year, school year. Any questions on that?
Through the chair, just to administration, just one quick question. Thank you for this information. And I know that, you know, we've been hearing from a lot of kindergarten parents. Do you know when the school administration will be reaching out to them to set up their, their phone interviews?
I think it's just three, two weeks in school.
Through the, through the chair, to Ms. Clancy. They suggest, so it's, it's going to be a online survey. The parents will answer inventory. And they suggest a few weeks after school starts to begin the screening. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we can file that? Roll call.
Ms. Bian Carrier? Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next is to consider approve the amended 2020 school calendar by including the Juneteenth holiday. Any questions on that? I think it's pretty obvious. Do a roll call.
Ms. Bian Carrier? Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Bian Carrier is a yes on that.
You're, okay, you're in the B section. Okay. So I was going to say, Madam Superintendent, thank you for putting that forth. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bian Carrier? Request that the administration review the possibility of an early retirement package for the Worcester Public Schools' teaching staff to include a cost analysis that covers a three-year or five-year bio. I think we have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. I did want to refer to page 214 in our budget book. And speaking with Mr. Allen, we reviewed what us early retirement incentive was back in 2010, and that was for non-teachers. We have 104, 255 remaining. That is our last payment. We are done paying for that. With that into consideration, I think it's time that we take a look at what we can do during these difficult times to come up with something that we could offer in a combination. Perhaps backfill some of the positions. Look at what the state budget has for possibilities. And also look at state options for possibilities. What is, what the cost is at this time, coming up with a schedule for a paying retirement system, plus the interest. Perhaps we could go with a three-year to five-year thought process with a 10-year paying-back system. We've done it in the past. When you look at what we have to offer, in '96, we did it for teachers. We did it again in 2002 for non-teaching positions, 2003. We have to come up with some alternative. If we do have teachers that are looking at this, I've received a number of emails. My constituents certainly are interested. I'm not quite sure if the administration had parameters that they would like to set. But I'm more than interested to find out what the cost analysis would be for something like this.
Okay. So we're just going to try to get a cost analysis on this. Actually, let people beware though. This is a very complicated thing to get through. I mean, I believe the city, I'm not positive. I think the council would have to probably pass this along. Definitely the state legislature. So this is a process. So I, and there are no early retirements going through the legislature right now. I know there's, there's a number of them that always filed every year with the state legislature, and they don't pass them unless the government puts it forth themselves. So, but with that, I don't mind getting the analysis if I want to do that so people understand the costs associated with that. So roll call.
Ms. Bian Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we'll try to do a few more. Then we'll break for executive session in a couple of minutes. So we'll try to get through this next page. Request that the administration study the feasibility of collaborating with the community partners to set up a person learning laboratories for parents, guidance to bring their child, children on the remote learning days. Mrs. Clancy?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm just looking to see if we could work with some more of our community organizations to set up learning laboratories while, for working parents to drop their children off while they work. So more during-the-day types of situations. I know that our technology department has come up with that awesome Caregivers Tech Academy, and they're willing to do trainings for our community partners. So I think that would be beneficial if we can utilize those partners in this situation. I also think if we could reach out to our area colleges, particularly those with students who are in teaching programs, to see if we could partner up with them, for them to be able to do their observation hours or even utilize them as, for their student teaching hours to work possibly at these learning laboratories. So it's just something that I want to see if we can, you know, try to explore to reach out to different partnerships in the community to help alleviate some of the things that parents are going to be dealt with, trying to work full-time and with their students being in school during the day remotely.
Okay. Send that, anybody else? So we'll send that to the administration. Roll call.
All right, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Novak?
I just wanted to note that, that what Mrs. Clancy is proposing is actually something that is happening in a couple of other districts. I've read, for example, Everett's plan. But there are a couple of districts that are setting up these sorts of things. So I just wanted to let people know that there are models out there that are happening. Thanks.
They call them like PODs too, I think. And it's a little bit different, but yeah, there's community. I think Superintendent Benanda has talked to some of the community members who are interested in doing this too. So, okay. So roll call.
Ms. Bian Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, to accept the following donations, $1,000 to Forest Grove Middle School from Health Resources and Action Participation in a Health Science Project entitled Project Here, and $100 to the Library Fund of the Conscion Community College from Spare Management Group in memory of Eleanor Jane Petrow. Roll call.
Bian Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Approve a prior fiscal year payment amount of $56,35 for employee for services rendered previously. Roll call.
Ms. Bian Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Consider approve of the proposed school calendars for 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25, 25, 26 school years. Ms. Novak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair, is there a reason why, why we're doing this now? I, I don't have any particular objection. I'm just, I'm interested.
Ms. Benanda? Are you on mute, Maury?
I think it was just, it was something that was worked on for the, the last school year. And I know Dr. Meade Montague was the head of the committee. I don't know if she wants to add anything to that.
Dr. Meade Montague?
Surely.
Surely. Typically, we vote calendars at least three years in advance. We get a lot of requests from staff and parents for calendars, um, ahead of time. So, um, we usually as a committee do them, uh, at least three years in advance. I will say that we did it five years, um, this year.
Leaving us a little-
Wonder why? Just trying to give a little bit of lead time. It is a process and we, it does take a, a lot of time to get it done. So it's easier, you know, when you're doing them to do a set of them. So just wanted to make sure we were set up for success and to support our families.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing I would say, Mr. Chair, I, I will certainly, I'll vote in favor of this, but, um, it does strike me that this is the sort of year where, um, reconsidering things like this comes into play. Um, and it may be that we get partway through this year and start to rethink some of how we do things, including this kind of schedule. Um, so I just wanna sort of leave that as a, a possibility for my colleagues, um, because it wouldn't surprise me if that's the kind of thing that happens. That's all. Thank you.
So roll call.
Ms. Bean Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Request that the administration provide a report on the way in which it deals with absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, provide a report back in October. Mr. Monfredo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we enter the new, uh, school year, you know, um, I think could possibly be, uh, be present, engaged, and supported. Uh, we need to emphasize that there'll be a strong trusting relationship between our students, families, teachers, and other staff members. Establishing and maintaining regular communication with families in welcoming, welcoming them as partners, uh, will certainly ensure that students are supported at home and at school. Now, one of the many keys to success is being proactive, positive, data-driven, and using problem-solving approaches. One idea is that, uh, remote learning, um, in, in, in remote learning, let's, uh, employ multiple measures to monitor whether extra support enrichment is needed to ensure academic success. We also want to monitor the attendance in, in which populations of students are most effective. Attendance certainly does matter, whether it's, we're talking about remote or whether we're talking about hybrid. Uh, we do have an, an active attendance committee that put forward by the superintendent a few years back. And so I would urge our superintendent to bring the committee together and let the schools and partners know how, how we can all help. Again, being proactive and starting this theme with a theme, let's, let's have parents know that present, engaged, and supported will be our initial goal. I'd, uh, I'd like to report, um, the absenteeism of, uh, to the school committee, uh, by the end of December, if that would be possible. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Bean Carrier?
I'll probably do the roll call. Helen, now we have Ms. Novick.
I'm just, I, I'm trying to clarify. Uh, Mr. Monfredo's item says a report back in October. I think if I understood him correctly, he was saying by the end of December. I just wanted-
By December, yeah, right. That's correct. By the end of December.
Through the chair, would Mr. Monfredo like to have this, um, go to, the data, data stuff usually comes to my committee. Would you like to actually have that come to my committee and have a discussion there? Through the chair?
Uh, no, I don't think so at this time. No.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get a report. Roll call.
Right.
Ms. Bean Carrier?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Request that the administration provide a plan in October on ways in which students can receive additional assistance with their schoolwork. Mr. Monfredo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, that, uh, many students will be in need of additional service once we venture into remote learning as well as, um, the hybrid model. I know that administration in their opening plans, um, spoke about additional assistance. And so with that in mind, I'd like administration to come forward with a plan so that parents will know what resources on there are at the school as well as in the neighborhood to assist their children or even, um, as we, as we go forward, uh, in, in a new school year. If there ever was a time for educators to step up, it certainly is now, as we well know. We need our principals and teachers to figure out all that they, they can do to assist as often as possible. In addition, I ask administration to reach out to our community agencies, businesses, in our colleges and universities to be part of the process. Um, I have been in contact with the Worcester Braveheart's and they will be coming forward with a video, uh, students using their free time. In addition, I've collected books from many, uh, retired teachers, uh, that I've given to schools. And today, the Worcester Animal Rescue League, uh, gave me some supplies that I'll be distributing to some, some, uh, to some school for our students to use at home. Now, we certainly need all hands on deck as we move forward. This has been a, a huge, uh, this has to be a huge community effort to assist our children. So my motion, uh, and I would ask the superintendent to establish a committee to not only come up with information to assist our students, but for the committee to monitor results throughout the school year. So come the end of, uh, October, let's have everything in place and let our students and parents know where they are, where the resources are available to them and, uh, and to tap within the schools in, in the community for the parents to know where to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough.
Um, could the superintendent just, to Mr. Monfredo's, um, questions, could the superintendent just maybe elaborate if the caregiver academy really ties in to that along with the community outreach?
Uh, Ms. Benner?
Through the chair, Ms. McCullough. So the Caregivers Academy, uh, is really to train caregivers on, you know, how to help their children with the work. So I, I do think that intersects in that area and then also how to use the technology. Uh, it also teaches community agencies how to also intersect with the work. So I, I do think that that, uh, does help, um, provide support for agencies and caregivers so that they are helping the child do the work.
So-
No, no, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. It didn't mean to say that.
There's also, uh, we've received, um, some inquiries too from like Holy Cross College this week on, uh, some of their, um, students, uh, want to be able to help out and provide homework centers and support for kids. And, uh, we're, uh, trying to work that out so that, um, you know, we're able to make sure everybody's core checked and be able to actually work with our students and how, how they would access the students and the work. So there have been a lot of, uh, requests of people coming to ask if they can help and we're trying to, uh, work that out, how that can happen.
Excellent. Thank you. I mean, to Mr. Monfredo's point, you know, it needs to be a community effort with this. So I appreciate that and I look for more.
Yeah, parents need to know about this as well, too.
Ms. Bean Carrier?
Thank you. Um, and I, I certainly, uh, first of all, uh, Dr. Freel, if you could put me on as the co-sponsor for this. I'm more than interested in this. Um, my, a couple of my questions are in reference to COVID-19. And that would be if and when we are involving community, um, in any activity. Are we prepared with a plan? And if so, um, if we could get an update on that plan over the next week or two on how we're going to involve the community and ensure that, um, college students and community people who are participating in any of our programs have been properly screened. And, uh, we're taking, uh, every precaution that we possibly can to ensure that everyone is safe. Has that been incorporated in any of the plans?
Through the chair. So everything is virtual. Uh, all the help that's gonna be offered at this point is virtual. So it's mostly core checks and, uh, trying to find ways that, uh, the, you know, they'll say the Holy Cross students could access the work with the students, uh, because we just can't give access to our students, to people that are not employees of the Worcester Public Schools. So we're trying to work, work through that. Some community agencies, uh, like Worcester Educational Collaborative are, uh, working on their own program. So, uh, we would not be supervising that. Uh, that would be something that they're doing independently, notifying our students and providing the support. Oh.
You're on mute, Diana. Diana?
Dog's barking at the same time. I apologize. Uh, but I'll speak loudly. So anytime that any of the community or the colleges are involved, it's all going to be virtual.
At this point, um, anything that they're doing with us, if they do something after school, uh, it might not be virtual, but we, we are not actually involved supervising that. That would be something they would independently do with the families.
Okay, thank you, Diana.
Okay.
Okay, so motion is to send that to administration. Uh, roll, roll call.
Ms. Bean Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley? Ms. McCullough?
Yeah.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, um, before we go into-
The next ones are real fast. They just call roll, roll calls if you wanna try to do them.
Okay, well, well, we can do that.
Collectively.
We can do, uh, okay, we'll do the, we'll do them all collectively. If someone has a question, they can ask.
I have a question.
Okay, I'll read them. Let me read them first and go to a question. Accept the summer vacation learning program grant in the amount of $36,000. To approve the fiscal year prior fiscal year payment amount of $692 to Automated Building Systems Inc. for emergency service repairs to heating units. To approve a prior fiscal year payment amount of $530 to PB Allen Company, Inc. for the fire alarm services repair at Nelson Place. To approve prior fiscal year payments amount of $110 each for the following Worcester Public Schools transportation employees for school. For certified license renewals in exam, in physical exams. To approve the prior fiscal year payment in the amount of $1,860 an employee. Accept the water improvement grant in the amount of $6,000. To approve prior fiscal year payments amount of $1,487.67 to the American Arbitration Association and arbitrator, uh, SRT. Uh, Ms. Novick, you have a question?
Yeah, I have questions on two of them. Um, on the first one, on the summer vacation learning program, learning grant through the chair of the administration. It looked to me that as though there were several different plans outlined there depending on when the grant came through. Um, I'm assuming that it, it obviously wasn't the August option, but could the administration tell us when it is that that, they're planning on having that run?
Are you on mute, Maureen?
Uh, through the chair, I'm going to refer that to Dr. O'Neil.
Dr. O'Neil?
Yeah.
No, go ahead. Is she in on this?
She is, but she's both off and on mute.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Dr. O'Neil, you're on mute. Unless we watch your singing.
Sorry, through the chair.
Oh, sorry.
Um, as we go, um, forward, there'll be a program amendment, the funding that goes through next summer. And the special education portion is for our most impacted students. If we're not able to reach them, um, with a hybrid model, we would, um, consider contracting with an agency that can or volunteers that can provide support to the families. And then for the grade nine through 12, it's a virtual in-person if our position changes on Saturdays and school vacations.
Okay, so that will be happening essentially during this school year then? Through the chair?
Through the chair, through this school year and next summer.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And then I had a question, Mr. Chair, on, um, GB0-261, which was the school water improvement grant. Um, I know that there's been actually a lot of activity, um, around facilities, um, in getting these done because obviously we've had to shut off all of the, the bubblers. Um, I, I know that we've seen others of these come through. I assume through the chair of the administration, are our new buildings, including these?
Uh, ma'am superintendent?
Through the chair and Mr. Allen?
Excuse me.
Through, through the chair, yes. Nelson Place-
Thank you.
-has these units installed throughout the building and South High is also being designed to have these throughout the building. Other than that, these are ones and twos throughout the district that's been purchased either through grants or PTO donations.
Okay. It would seem to me, uh, is the administration aware of any other efforts that are going on? I, I would assume that there probably are districts that are actually even using their CARES Act funding for this, but is the administration aware of any other lines of revenue or any other work that's being done on getting these installed into current buildings?
Through the chair, in other districts, I'm seeing other districts do this work. Um, we have not made an investment to do this, but we are working on a solution to provide water to students when we return to in-person learning.
Okay. Um, I know we have a, a very long list, Mr. Chair, of asks of various groups of people, but we might point out that, um, both from a, an actual sort of legal standpoint of students having access to water as well as, um, an environmental standpoint, that being able to install these in buildings would long-term be a better solution than us going out and buying packs and packs of water bottles. Thanks. That's all I had.
Okay, so collectively, I'm, I'm, Monfredo?
Yeah, just very quickly, uh, on, uh, on the grant, uh, 0-256, I just wanted, like, Dr. O'Neil and administration for receiving the grant. Uh, first, it certainly is going to be helping our most vulnerable students. Now, this grant's helping our, not only, uh, our sped students, but also running the performing students in the secondary. Uh, I would also like to encourage administration to come up with a program, if at all possible, for our grades, um, one to three students, during vacation time and could simply use this. Perhaps if we can look for either another grant out there or come up with, uh, working with various agencies to assist the, our, uh, our students in the primary grades, uh, during vacation time or during, or for next summer. So, uh, make that as a motion to look for it. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take these collectively off to, on Monfredo's motion. Roll call.
Ms. Bean Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yeah.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Before we go into executive session, maybe take one more item. Um, I know David Shea's been on the line. He's only here for one item, so. Uh, wanna go to 273? Requested school committee approve the participation of Worcester Public Schools in the following fall sports as recommended by EEA, MIAA, and DESI guidance. Um, so we have a list of all the sports, so I just wanna say before we, uh, debate this, I think this is very important. I know it's complicated and I know the guidelines have not been completed yet. I think they're gonna be out next week. I think we need, I'm ve- very much for bringing sports back and I think we should bring it back. And with the protocols that are gonna be required, I know that it's gonna be not an easy task. But these kid, I think our students need these activities and I can, and, uh, keep them busy. And so I'm very supportive of this. And does anybody have any questions or issues? Uh, Ms. McCullough, oh, I'm, uh, who we got? Mrs. McCullough, five, and Ms. Novick, did you have your hand, Tracey?
Yep.
Okay, okay, go.
I just wanted to clarify through the chair right now that we could do this potentially as a vote to proceed with exploring so that we can get the ball rolling, but know that we'll be getting more information so things could adjust or if perhaps the superintendent or Mr. Shea could clarify on that, um, so that we could just get a little information before we vote tonight.
Uh, Mr. Maureen, uh, Mr. Shea, or Mr. Benner?
We're here. We're here. Um, yes, and Mr. Shea's here too. And I think that's a great idea, uh, because, uh, we're supposed to get the accommodations that, um, must be provided for the sports for, um, the fall term next week. And so we, we, we know some of them, you know, for example, with soccer, you can't head the ball. Uh, we know that you can't have benches on the same side if you're on opposite sides. So we know that there are, um, some changes coming out in order to have the sport happen. Uh, this is what the, uh, MIA is suggesting. Um, I'll ask Mr. Shea to come on, um, to give a little more detail on that.
Mr. Shea?
Good evening. Uh, thank you, mayor, for allowing us to speak on behalf of athletics. Um, I first wanna say to, uh, Ms. McCullough, thank you so much for what you just mentioned. Um, I think it's imperative that, uh, we have a vote from school committee, uh, this evening so that, uh, we can move forward. With that vote, it doesn't necessarily mean that things can change. We're living in a society right now that we're day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month. But I think that with that vote, in order for athletics to move forward- but I think that with that vote, in order for athletics to move forward, then I can then go out and then speak with the other athletic directors from Central Mass District Two and Three to let them know that we have the initial approval and then as we need to change things or modify things along the way, we would be able to do so. We have been receiving guidelines from the EEA, from DESI, from the MIAA, and they also mentioned that the COVID-19 Task Force would be allowing us to get further information for sports-specific guidelines regarding boys golf, cross-country for boys and girls, field hockey, and soccer for boys and girls by September 1st. We could then utilize that information, share that with everyone involved, make the proper adjustments, recommendations with the Superintendent, the Durkin Administrative Building, with obviously the seven principals that are involved, and then take that to the next step to see if we feel comfortable following all those guidelines in order to make sure that our coaches and student athletes are safe and healthy if we do in fact move on with the sports in the fall season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Ms. Novick?
So I guess through the Chair then, is the proposal then to alter the wording of the motion? Because the motion is to approve.
I think it means the same thing. I think Mr. Shea, this explained, and if we approve it now, it's going to change if need be, but what was your motion again, Ms. McCullough?
Through the Chair, I mean, I would be willing to ask that question in the form of a motion, that we make a motion tonight that we move forward with proceeding on exploring, moving forward would be fall sports, the modified fall sports, and then receive information back from the Superintendent of Athletics to make a final vote if that is something that the Superintendent and Mr. Shea, you know, are agreeable to on the school.
Through the Chair, I would agree with Ms. McCullough's motion on that because there is more information that's expected next week, but we would still, you know, need to have the School Committee approval to go to continue to explore because there are coaches that have to be hired, right? There are, there are some things that have to happen and we would need to at least be able to plan. That School Committee was considering having fall sports for the ones that we recommended.
Mr. Foley? And Ms. Novick, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I asked because I, first of all, I want to say, by the way, that I very much appreciate Mr. Shea, first of all, answering. I know I sent him a boatload of questions earlier this week and I appreciate his answers on those. I also appreciate getting the exact wording out of Pittsfield earlier today. I read the article in the Berkshire Eagle with interest. I've also been communication with Framingham, which was prepared to move forward with a vote to not have sports prior to their upgrade or downgrade, depending on how you look at it on the map, to being a red community. There are significant issues, not only of cost, I mean, we spoke certainly here of the coaches, but transportation, as we've already been discussing, remains a bit of an open issue for the community. Obviously, we would, even if we are competing in Worcester, that remains an open question. One thing that was raised with a great degree of urgency to me by multiple athletes were two questions of equity. The first one is that students will not be at buildings and thus students are dependent on either the WRTA or private transportation to get there. We live in a city that, in which a significant number of families do not have access to private cars, and we live in a city in which it would take, just to give you one example, my daughter, who is a cross-country runner, the better part of an hour by WRTA to get to her school. That doesn't strike me as a particularly workable solution. So we essentially are then canceling out the participation of a significant number of athletes by virtue of moving forward under these conditions. It was also noted that while, and I'm not arguing at all that athletics are important, we are not making these provisions for the robotics team or for theater or for chorus or for band or for any of the other area of extracurricular that would be a great deal to a number of our students. So I am very concerned, not about us per se, but the way in which the state has handled this as an issue apart in a way that I think is actually an artificial construct. I think that we are making, that there's a willingness to make compromise here, that we are not making compromises in a significant number of other areas. And I, again, say that with the greatest, I do not in any way mean this in any way about the Worcester Public Schools Athletic Department, which I have the greatest degree of respect for. I think that the state is doing that and that concerns me a great deal. So if my colleagues want to move forward with getting additional information, I won't oppose that. I too would be interested in how we're planning on doing things like running buses, but I don't support this as an idea this fall. I don't think it is wise and I particularly don't think it is equitable. I think that we are, we are making a break with past practice, which has always been that Worcester lets, makes provision for everyone to play. It's why we've never charged for athletics. I have a great degree of respect for my colleagues who've been on the committee for a long time who have done that, but this essentially sets a financial bar that students will not have any control over. And I don't think that's right and I don't think it's right for us to do this and not move forward with other things, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Foley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, a clarification, did Superintendent Penanda say that in soccer, you're not going to be allowed to head the ball?
That is correct.
It's just, you know, I support the concept of going forward and let Mr. Shea work with other ADs and other districts and to see what the opportunities might be, but I, and I, you know, I have no problem with golf and cross-country, I think those are pretty clearly independent, but I worry about MIAA, how they're stepping in saying, well, you know, you can play soccer, but you can't head the ball. For whatever reason, that's something that's more riskier than whatever else you might be doing. It's just, it's a bit mind-boggling to me to think that they're actually parsing it such a way that says you can come across each other in soccer and try and get the ball together and be within a foot or so, but you can't head the ball. It worries me quite a bit about some of the thought process that's going through here. I'm worried that as a district, we're saying that it's not safe for students and teachers and others to be in a classroom setting, yet we would put, we put some of our students at risk on the, on the field. I support it. I'm okay with it to go forward. Let's take a look at what the other information may be coming forward, but I, I do have some, some concerns about where we're going with it.
Okay, Mr. Shea?
Through the Chair, Mr. Foley, I would love to just respond that I feel your same thoughts and what I can hopefully say is that with this vote, it allows us to move forward so that once we gain access to more information, MIAA, as a district, along with the School Committee, we can take a look at those guidelines and we may come back and say that we could actually do cross-country and boys golf and then we may take a look at it and say, boy, field hockey looks like we may be able to do it and soccer looks very difficult based on the new sports-specific modifications. And I don't want anyone to misconstrue that I think that there may be a chance that we can't play because I really think that that's a possibility, but I also think that a vote of approval, based on the recommendation that DESI says that any city or town that's in white, green, or yellow needs the approval of School Committee to move forward, I think it's imperative to have that vote and that allows us to explore the other options that may be coming out and the other information and we can make a decision. As we know, if we ever went to a red city at any point along the way, our athletics would have to be shut down automatically. So we are going to adjust and we're going to be changing and things could be modified on a daily basis, but I think the vote of approval allows us to at least take that next step and then research and get those guidelines and the modifications and collectively as a district say if we feel each one of those fall sports is safe and healthy for our coaches and student athletes to participate in.
I'm certainly in favor of that, Mr. Shea. I'll support the vote tonight. I just, I find some of the, some of the state thinking on this to be a little bit disconcerting. I appreciate you carrying it forward.
Okay, Ms. Penanda?
Yes, I was wondering, so I know that we were reading the article today about some of the other places that have decided to not have sports just for first quarter and then they would, then those sports would show up in that floating quarter, right, which they're calling for two, fall two. So whatever we decided would not have an opportunity during fall one, those, those are eligible with School Committee approval for fall two. But I think what's important, and so maybe the question came up to me earlier today, well, who would we play, right, if all these other places aren't playing? And so I'm just going to ask Mr. Shea to explain to you, what is the pod that would be involved in and what are the schools that, all these schools that we would be in competition with?
Mr. Shea? Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. So what the Central Mass District Two and Three Athletic Directors have established is what we're calling a geographical pod. The geographical pod for Worcester includes the seven Worcester Public Schools, Notre Dame Academy, Abbey Kelly, and now the Holy Name and St. Peter Marian combined New School of St. Paul's. So in that geographical pod, we would have limited travel for our student athletes and I know that was a concern and obviously listen, listening in since four o'clock, I know we have some issues with possibility with the buses and things like that. It limited the amount of travel that our student athletes would be on a bus or having to get to certain venues to play, whether it be Foley Stadium or the other three high schools that I mentioned. The second piece for the pod and the rationale behind it was the fact that in that pod, if any, if the city of Worcester went to red, then that means all of our schools would not be able to play anymore. We would all be shut down because we all happen to be in the city of Worcester. The third piece to that geographical pod is for contact tracing. Rather than have to worry about all the schools in Central Mass District Two and District Three, if something, heaven forbid, did happen where students may have come in contact with the virus, I know that I'm dealing with the Worcester Public Schools and those three other schools rather than all of Central Mass where if one week, for just an example, if South High was playing against Wachusett, then they played against Lemonster, then they played against Nipmuck, I have to start making the contact tracing with all those schools. This limits the amount of people and the amount of exposure that we would have to go back with the contact tracing.
Thank you, Mr. Shea and thank you, Ms. Penanda. We, Mr. Monfredo?
Mr. Mayor, I still have a lot of confidence in Mr. Shea as we move forward and he's still, he's going to look for the best interest not only of us system, but also of the students under his care. So I would suggest we move forward, guiding, more guidelines will be coming in. I'm sure that Mr. Shea will be in touch with us as far as making other adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monfredo. Ms. Biancheria? You're on mute.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I certainly applaud because I think sports certainly is something that is necessary throughout the city and it's unfortunate we're under such circumstances trying to keep everyone healthy and safe. What I would like, I'll make a motion that we do hear when the new rulings come in, we do receive an update on how we're going to handle this. I would also include in that motion that if the city does go in red, we are notified as a full body immediately. So we are well aware of this and we're not reading it somewhere else or hearing it from parents, that our School Committee members were notified right away. So there isn't a question on whether they stop the sports or not. And when we look at moving forward as far as other programs, I would like to think at some point in time, we can start to look at other programs and come up with some ideas, but this certainly is going in the right direction for our kids with opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Shea, and I think the equity issue is very important when we go forward. I think you got to address that to the School Committee, that everybody has access and wants to play. Ms. Penanda?
Mr. Mayor, too, I agree with that and I just wanted to add about the equity access that we will be providing bus tickets for students to get to and from their games so that everyone does have access to get there and most of the games start around 3:15, 3:30 for the competitions and so they should be able to get across the city using the buses in that time.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Novick?
Could I ask that as part of the exploratory work that the Administration does, that they actually look at, essentially map it out, go for when, when a student is supposed to get off of their class, where their nearest bus is and how long it will actually take them to get to their high school? I appreciate that we're going to provide tickets, I do at least, I'm glad it's been thought of. I think that we may find that it's a bit of a challenge and we would want to make sure that that, if that was the Administration's plan, we would want to make sure that that was being appropriately communicated, particularly to the coaches.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to, Mr. Shea?
Through the Chair, just wanted to elaborate on one piece about the travel. Currently in the Worcester Public Schools, we have a transportation policy for athletics that if you are taking, if you have a game after school, then we provide you a bus not only in the city, but outside the city as well. On, in the evening or on the weekends or a holiday, if you are traveling outside the city, we would provide a bus for you, but if it was in the evening or if it was on the weekend or a holiday and it was in city, we did not provide busing for you unless it was a special circumstance. So the examples that I would use in the past, when we've had like the inter-high boys basketball tournament or when we've had the inter-high girls basketball tournament or we've had other events that took place at night, such as a hockey game and things like that, we had our students that would have to get there on their own under the current transportation policy. Is it ideal? No, but they have figured out ways in order to do that. I mean, in an ideal world, we would be able to provide busing at all times, but that is something that we have been dealing with, with our coaches and our student athletes over the 10 years that I have been on as the Athletic Director for the Worcester Public Schools. So yes, I do agree that we, I have heard from students and parents that sometimes it's not easy and it depending on the sport, when we've had students up at South High trying to row crew down at Lake Quin Sigeman, sometimes they do find it difficult. We have worked with the Administration with bus passes and alternative methods for transportation, but again, there are certain things that the students and the parents and the coaches have been dealing with already.
Okay, so we're going to propose, okay, Maureen McCullough's order on the, on the athletics along with Ms. Novick's amendment of additional information, so roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
I'm sorry, excuse me, I made a couple of motions with, is that Diane?
Yeah, Diane Biancheria's motions also, I forgot that.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Ms. McCullough?
You're muted.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, okay, okay.
There are nine more, Mayor Petty, nine more items.
We can try. I don't want to keep, okay, we'll try. Okay, we go page, we're on page six?
Oh, oh, two, six, three.
Okay, if it starts getting slow, we'll go there, but request Administration review all staff policy regarding the fundraising and ensure that the, followed by the Worcester Public Schools staff, that's GBEED, regarding that. Ms. Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, this is already the policy of the Worcester Public Schools, it has been for some time, and this is a fairly standard statewide policy, which a number of districts put into place at the time that online fundraising took off. I also know that it is massively not being followed and rather than go sort of instance by instance, what I am requesting is that the Administration not only specifically take this policy and make sure that it gets into the hands of the principals, but that the principals then take this policy and get it into the hands of the teachers. It outlines exactly what needs to happen and I want to note to my colleagues and also to the teachers that are listening, who are now going to put, if they follow this, find this to be more onerous than what they were doing in the past, policy is designed... Policy is designed to protect the innocent, not to convict the guilty. This is designed to protect our teachers, but it's also designed to protect our districts. So it means that online fundraising needs to be approved by the principal. The superintendent determines in what circumstances things need to actually be approved at her level or at ours. There is a specific outline of what exactly can be approved, what exactly can be fundraised for. Technology specifically needs to be fundraised, needs to be approved in advance by the technology department. Parents cannot be directly asked because teachers obviously have a degree of authority over those that they are in contact with. There is a disclosure of who has been requested periodically and because that is a matter of public record. And the, those things that are donated do need to be accepted by the school committee. They need to be, go to the school. They become school property unless there is a particular waiver that's made in writing. So again, the school committee has already passed this policy. It's been the policy of the Worcester Public Schools for some time. What we're not doing a great job of is actually communicating this to our teachers and to those who are actually on the front lines. I know very well, because I've seen them go up, that there's a significant number of these that are coming out now. The fundraising universe is ripe for abuse. And obviously, that isn't something that we know that our people are going to be contributing to, but we want to make sure that we are protecting our staff and the integrity of our system by making sure that this is being properly followed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Ms. McCullough?
I would just like to say that I do appreciate Ms. Novak bringing this item forward. It is something that I believe I had brought up in the past as well. And I know that administration has worked on trying to get this out or has gotten this out to principals, but it still does continue to pop up. So I, I just do agree that if we could really make sure all of our employees are very clear and really just for the purpose of protecting people, you know, it's not to be punitive. It's more so that we need to make sure that people know that when they are being solicited, that it is coming through an approved source. So I do, I would just like to say that I do appreciate this being on because I do think it is important, especially as we are beginning in the year and activities could be starting and there are more opportunities for this to be happening. So, thank you.
Okay. So send that to the administration. Roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Consider and redraft as necessary the policies and associated sections of the school, student handbook considered by pandemic policy specific for back to school. Ms. Novak?
As it reads.
Okay, roll call.
To refer to this governance?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To consider affirmative action plan for the Worcester Public Schools, day May 13th, 1993. I'm sure a lot of people here had to know that we had a affirmative action plan at one time. And I think it needs to be updated and is outdated, there's no question about that. But a lot of time and effort went into that document. And my recommendation is that we ask the chief diversity officer and human resources, Jennifer Belay, and work with Sean Sweeney to update the, the affirmative action plan. And maybe ask Stacy DeBoyle's Lester if she'd participate in doing that since she was a major sponsor of this, along with Ed Augustus and Harriet Chiller back in the 1990s. So that's how far back this goes. And, and I think it's an important document. And I know it, it talks about the equal opportunity policies and also affirmative action components, a few components here. So I'd be interested in getting something back. Ms. McCullough, followed by Mr. Monfredo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, I appreciate the item and certainly agree with it and referring it to administration. I just, this has, was something that came up in the task force that we did in conjunction with Worcester State on diversity and hiring and recruitment. And just wanted to know if we would tie this in with that when we do have a more of official report back on that report as well? I mean, I know this was a component of that because I believe I actually had solicited it from the school department and provided it for that task force. So would we be able to get something back on that at that time as well? And any updates from the district?
Sure, I know that on the Worcester State report, that was released, but I don't think people got that.
Right.
I think we'll have to re-release it so people can read, bring it to the school committee. But yeah, we can make that happen to look at this.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that was my ask. If we could just go over that again at some point too, down the road, and also take in any of the new updates and the review of this plan, that would be great.
Okay, we have Mr. Monfredo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could also address the next one to two, six, six.
Okay, to consider the recruitment and retention plan of the minority teachers and administrations, day March 4th, 1999.
And I still agree with you, Mr. Mayor, this plan is 27 years old. And then just to make a case in point, people that might be interested, the plan talks about hiring, obviously many of them already retired, and talks about the hiring of more women in the Worcester Public Schools. And obviously, there are more women than men in positions as administrators and as teachers. And also the transfer language no longer exists. In addition, many of the parts of plans that are there already exist. When we talk about encouraging diversity, hiring within our system and treating everyone with respect. And many of the ideas in a plan are already embedded into the strategic plan. However, as you said, Mr. Mayor, plan can perhaps be a helpful guide to our chief diversity officer as we move forward. So let's have our superintendent along with the chief diversity officer and HR I look at the plan and come up with some recommendations and say, and again, let's not try to micromanage each issue in district and let the superintendent come back with a plan and let us know. As far as the other item, again, it's 19 recruitment. This plan is outdated. The transfer language has changed. IAs can work and become teachers now. We do have college recruiting fears taking place. We are working with area colleges and recruiting. And we did start the Future Teachers Academy. And as a matter of fact, on that issue, we still need to recruit our best and brightest minority students on a one-on-one basis as we move forward and let them know that a teaching job is waiting for them once they graduate and pass the teacher certification plan. So again, this document could be of some assistance to our chief diversity officer as, as we move forward during those years. We have done a lot. So again, let's, let's get this report to our chief diversity officer for her recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was my plan, is send both of these and, and also make the administration, look at the strategic plan, how we implement that with the strategic plan now, what some of the goal setting that was done in this plan. And there's some good stuff in here still, but it needs to be updated and reconciled with what we're doing today. Mr. Foley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hate to, it's reflective of our own failings in some way that we find the affirmative action plan that is 27 plus years old or so. And a young Ed Augustus worked on this. But I, I think we can move forward on this and I would, just a couple of quick comments. One is that I would hope that we would engage additional community members beyond Miss Luster, those, some of those folks who worked in the strategic plan and who could really help us, I think, and help us develop a better plan by engaging them in a genuine way for a discussion about how to really develop this plan. And whatever plan we look at and we approve, I expect it has to have intentional action steps in there. But what we are doing to really bring greater levels of diversity to our district and also to include benchmarks. I mean, this, this plan here had benchmarks in it, I'm glad to see that. But I, I hope that our plan has to have also very ambitious benchmarks by which we would hold ourselves accountable going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley, I agree with you. And the team administration and besides Stacy DeBoyle's Lester, maybe you can contact the city. They spent a great deal of time, the city, doing a firm of action plan and brought in people from different parts of the community to do it. And so, yeah, maybe use one-year advisory group from Madam Superintendent. And if you'd like to do that, that'd be up to you. But, okay, then, okay, so we'll send those to the proper places. With Molly McCullough's amendment, also include the Worcester State, which is really the mayor's report on recruitment. So roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. And I should add, I think Greta McNamara spent a long time on this, on this report herself. So just give her a shout out. Okay, two, six, seven, to review the staff's fiscal 21 budget and make appropriate transfers as required. I don't know if everybody's got a chance. I know, I know Alan, if you want to give a brief overview on Madam Superintendent, then if people have questions, Mr. Alan?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as indicated in the report, the state issued interim chapter 70 numbers at the end of July. The revised budget funds enrollment in inflation only for the foundation budget. And it eliminates the first year phase in of the Student Opportunity Act, a reduction of $15.5 million for those public schools. The final state budget isn't expected until around October and further adjustments may be necessary at that time. Also, any additional federal stimulus funding for education may impact the final budget as well. But in the meantime, the administration recommends that this interim budget be approved so we can implement and know that that's the baseline funding for this point in time. So the reduction of $15.5 million is certainly significant and painful for those public schools. But it's not necessarily the final budget, but it's an amount that we have as issued by the state at this point in time. And so we need to make adjustments based upon this new baseline funding level. The details of how we got to the $15.5 million cut are included in the backup to the item. And certainly, the administration can answer any particular questions.
Okay, Ms. McCullough? Not, we also for now, I guess, Ms. Alan, when do you think the state will have the budget completed? What's the timetable on that? I know it changes, but.
So I think I, I've heard sometime in October is now the timeframe of when they're expecting the next version of the state budget, whatever that looks like or who's putting it out.
Yeah, so right now, we really have, we need to, I think, pass this. I think a lot of thought went into this, but there are, people should realize that we are laying people off, you know, furlough people, I should say. And so we take it seriously. And I think the education value will still be there. You know, why, this is transportation money, but also the extended day part of this too. I think I talked, listened to some of the committee members and they want to make this a priority to bring back the extended day hours if possible as the first priority. And, and also when we open school up again, we bring back our cafeteria workers and bring back our crossing guards. And so, does anybody have any questions, concerns? Ms. McCullough, followed by Ms. Biancaria?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I know this is an extremely difficult scenario. I've had lots of conversations since we received this information recently. And knowing that it obviously took a lot of effort to go into the budget and figure out where things could be adjusted so that decisions could be made, even though they are not easy ones at all. And I've, I've talked with a lot of teachers the past few days regarding extended day programs. And we hear you about what the adjustment to your salary means. And this is an extremely difficult thing for any of us to have to make a decision about or be a part of. And we know that this impacts your lives and that you also have a great deal of passion behind the reason why you're doing the extended day programs. And we know that when we're in, you know, physical school buildings, that those do make a very big difference for our students and a lot of work goes into that. So I would just support, you know, the mayor's comment that if the budget comes out and it's different, that we prioritize this as the first thing that we can look at bringing back if these are the decisions that we do have to make tonight. Because I think we do know that it works for our students and some of these are our most vulnerable students. So I, I think people should really understand how difficult these decisions are to make. And nobody wants to be cutting a budget. But I think we've probably all been personally impacted by things with COVID and have family members who have lost jobs as well. And it's very difficult and we won't want to see things like this impact anyone. So I don't want people to really think that these decisions are made lightly by us at all or that the process is just very flippant at all. It's, it's a hard position. And certainly, the administration that had to put all the work into trying to figure this out as well. So I do appreciate the mayor's comment though that this is something, if we have to make this decision tonight, that we do look at bringing back as a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Ms. Biancaria?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate Ms. McCullough's comments. I feel the same way about the extended day. Thank you for bringing that up. To not reiterate all of that, I'm going to get right into the fact that I just feel as though we need to take a harder look at what we can reduce and what our savings is going to be when we have buildings that granted, yes, are going to be open, but they're not going to be with students. So where are we saving some money? Do, do we have any substantial dollars that we would be looking at over the next few weeks? Because our buildings are not going to be occupied by 25,000 to 26,000 students. Granted, there are teachers that will be going back and it's their option. However, when I look at this, I have some concerns on what we're reducing and how we are reducing it. Does the administration have any words on this?
Madam Superintendent or Mr. Alan? So the question is, I guess, is are we saving X mile money that could be used and maybe keep the extended day people there?
Through the chair, we have looked and there is no other money that we can come up with that we can save at this time. The schools still have to be open for the teachers that have chose to come in. So the lights are still on. And those schools that have air conditioning, the air conditioner is still on. So there are, and we have to clean the classrooms of those teachers that are in every single night. So there, there really isn't any savings at this point from that because we're still operating our buildings in the shutdown. We weren't operating the buildings. We didn't, we didn't even have our custodians there, right? There was shutdown. And so there were savings from heat, there were savings for lights. But right now, our buildings are still up and running. So there's no big savings in that for us right now. And our biggest savings, of course, is in the cost of transportation because we're not busing anybody from Durham. We are busing using our own transportation for the charter, parochial, and special enplacements. So the biggest hit for that obviously was transportation costs from not having to pay Durham for the first quarter.
Okay. I have another question, Mayor. When we look at all, all salary accounts, we have reduced 2% across all salary accounts. This reduction does not impact current salaries, step increases, or other existing contractual obligations. We could have a description of how this works, an example perhaps? Because I've had a number of questions on how this is going to affect people. Because we do have EAW and union in contracts and some are expired as of yesterday from what I, information I could gather. So if we could have some samples on this, please.
Mr. Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So clearly, it does not affect anybody's current salary or anybody scheduled to receive a step increase or any other contractual increase starting this school year. So if anybody's advancing a step, they'd still be receiving that step and they'd be receiving their current salary as it exists on current collective bargaining agreements. Beyond that, I would suggest perhaps we can discuss the rest of that in executive session after this item.
Oh, because it's part of the collective bargaining process?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Is, all right, I do make a motion that we could perhaps hold this item until next Thursday. What we do. What we do have a back-to-back school committee meeting so we can have more discussion in reference to it prior to our voting.
Was, is that this behind, or you need to process this? What we could do is pass this and send this to the Finance Committee for Furia and spend some time, Mr. Foley would like it, and maybe have a finance meeting next week and really discuss it and bring it back, any type of changes after we... I think, Mr. Allen, I talked to Mr. Allen today about this. He can correct me if I'm wrong, but he needs to put this into play and into process to get this done, Mr. Allen?
No, Mr. Mayor, you're correct. I mean, the timing isn't perfect, but we just received the interim budget from the state at the end of July, and it took us really time to go through line item by line item to identify $15.5 million of savings to present to you. But in order to achieve these savings, they need to be implemented essentially today, the first day of school for school year employees. So, the longer we wait, then we have to make other cuts to make up the difference.
Mr. Foley, would you want to do a committee meeting on this?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I assume we'll be having several of these over the course of the fall, as this is still a moving target, I think.
Okay, Ms. Biancaria?
So, no, I stand by, I stand with that motion that we put it out there to see if there is a vote on it, to hold the item until we bring it to committee. Otherwise, I just, I just feel as though I would have liked to have looked at this more in depth and taken some more options and looked at more opportunities and more discussion in hopes that we could perhaps go through the line items and have some discussion as a school committee with the budget. The last time we looked at this book, we had said it's always in process. And unfortunately, I myself received a hard copy of this today at 3:00. So, prior to that, I'm looking at it at a computer. I'm matching it up to my budget book, and after 24 years of experience as Assistant Vice President in Banking, I enjoy looking at budgets. So, I just feel as though I am rushed on this, and it's too important to be rushed. So, I can't support this tonight due to that fact because I feel as though we certainly should have had more discussion and reference to it. But I certainly also appreciate the fact that, you know, as you stated, Mayor, this is something that you're going to be moving forward with. But I would like to go to Finance Committee.
Okay, either way, I think either way it will, so, okay.
Okay.
And Mr. Monfredo, followed by Mrs. Clancy?
Thank you. Certainly, curtailing the after-school program, the extended day program, no one wants to see that happen. However, if the choice is curtailing that program in losing, in having someone lose a job, I don't think we have a choice unless something else comes in the budget, because we're talking, I believe, is it $1.9 million? Is that correct, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Monfredo, yes.
All right, yeah, and so, again, and if we're saying that we're deporting this, what's going to happen with $1.9 million? We don't want to, again, we don't, I know that there will be an adjustment in salaries, but people will be holding a job as opposed to cutting salaries out of the $1.9 million. So, we need to think carefully before moving forward.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Monfredo, you asked a question, you cut out there a little bit at the end, but I think you had an issue with the one...
Oh, I'm sorry. What I'm saying is that, again, going back, is that we need to make sure that we're not cutting jobs to stay the extended day program. Again, or, you know, there could be a, go in person. Am I quite sure of the feasibility of how effective it will be? Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Clancy?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, Mr. Allen, I know that, and you can tell that you worked, the administration worked line by line, because you can see where you made cuts, $7,000 there. And I do appreciate it. Same sentiment that my colleagues have. What I find so ironic is when we were getting the SOA money, my first priority was that I wanted extended day throughout the elementary schools. I know it works, I know how valuable it is to our most at-risk students. And I know that our employees, yes, you're still getting a salary, but there's a huge chunk of money that's going to be taken out of their paychecks every two weeks, and I know that that hurts. So, I do know that, you know, people are retaining their jobs, but we still have to acknowledge that they're going to be losing a significant amount of money through this. So, you know, to the administration, I do thank you for all your work on this, and I even pulled up my budget book, and I tried to figure something out, but it was useless, because I know, Mr. Allen, that you've done that. And I do appreciate that. I would say that if things, you know, we do return back, that I would like to see the extended day program be my top priority to get back into those schools. Thank you.
And Ms. Nowick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, when I echo Mrs. Clancy's sentiment, you know that when we're getting a budget action that involves $7,000, that we have, we've gone through this with something beyond a fine-tooth comb. Those aren't usually the numbers that we're dealing with in Worcester. I want to start, I think, by saying that this really doesn't feel fair. I, you were, you were up there willing to sue the state along with, you know, Mayor Carpenter and Mayor Mitchell. We, you know, Superintendent Benandia did all of the work with the superintendents of the other cities. God knows Mr. Allen's knocked himself out in terms of making sure that this was clear to everybody on earth. We finally got the bill signed. We finally started to get a budget that looked like it was heading in the right direction. And, you know, we got hit with a pandemic. I, I don't think irony even really covers this. So, I think it's important to acknowledge that sentiment because I think that the sort of general unfairness of this along with everything else warrants that. I very, very, very much appreciate that the administration has, I won't say magically, because magic is easy, at least in books, has managed to put together a cut of this significance without our cutting any jobs that would seem impossible. And I want to make sure that if there is, you know, if there's a sentiment that people understand tonight, it's that, that the administration managed to pull this together without actually any layoffs. And that's pretty close to miraculous. And I commend them for all the work, but I also want to note that really, the only reason that that's even possible is, as was already mentioned, it's because we're not running buses. It's because we're starting remotely. And so, the saving grace here is that we're saving jobs, we're literally saving teachers' positions by not running buses for the first quarter. It's really just as straightforward as that. I do want to mention, I got, one of the questions that I got was parallel to something that Ms. Biancaria was mentioning earlier, was, well, the buildings are closed, doesn't that somehow save a whole lot of money? I hesitate to use the word "only" when I'm talking about $6.2 million, but I do want to note for my colleagues that the Worcester Public School budget for utilities this year is only $6.2 million. You could zero out our utilities budget, and we still wouldn't close, we wouldn't even close half the gap here. So, and as we know, and as was noted in the memo, we're going to be massively running HVAC systems. We're going to have people who are in the buildings, we're not turning off the Wi-Fi. Those buildings are still going to need to be heated because we have them fall apart otherwise. So, there isn't saving, a lot of savings coming there. I know that there's implication that perhaps, maybe, possibly, we might see something, but that's not where there's big money. Looking at the actual recommendations here, the, they've... The couple of questions that I had, the instructional supplies account, I went back and looked because we passed the material, the instructional materials funding last week for the ELA curriculum. That's an account which is something like $400, $540,000. Just, I'm relating these two things in my head because there's only so much money that we actually even set aside for curriculum. Has, I assume that the administration also had other plans for that funding? Has that, has that account essentially been expended at this point? Is that kind of it for instructional, for the district-level instructional materials account? Through the charity administration?
Yes, so, if you're referring to Item C of that account, that account now has been pretty much exhausted, but you would think it would be going into the start of a school year that would be buying textbooks to start the school year. So, yes, that wouldn't be another source we could look at, but it's also been fully expended. The amounts listed in the budget recommendations come from Line B and Line D, just to be... I'm sorry, Line A and Line D.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask that question is because the administrative, the part of the recommendation here is to take that sort of almost mythical, well, not mythical, renowned $10 per pupil that some years they get to and some years we don't. And that's part of what's being cut here. I am not going to nickel and dime you here. I understand that when we go to that, we're going to that because we don't have a lot of choices. The reason I ask about the other account, though, through the charity administration, is that my understanding was that the administration was planning on actually buying material, student supplies, and getting those to students as part of distributing Chromebooks and everything else. We talked about art supplies, but I know that we also were talking about, there was some conversation around manipulatives, particularly for the younger students. I know that in many cases, students actually only get things like crayons and pencils and so forth if we actually give them to them. So, we're cutting what would seem to me to be the funding for that? Could the administration talk about what their plans are there, please, for materials for students?
Ms. Benandia, or Mr. Allen?
So, regarding them, through the chair, to Ms. Nowick. So, schools also have their own budgets for supplies, and so, some of that would come out of the school-based budget. Also, schools have manipulatives and some of those things already. So, I would be encouraging them to also, as we're giving out Chromebooks and iPads, also to distribute some of the classroom supplies such as manipulatives.
Okay, so, the last is good. The first, that's actually the account that we're cutting, is the per-pupil account, which then goes out through the, through the system.
The extra.
Yeah, so, there, that's actually the account we're cutting right now. So, that's why I'm wondering, how is the administration going to fund that if the account we're cutting is the account that we're talking about?
So, I believe, Mr. Allen can correct me, is that that's the, we keep $10 per student, and we usually give it to them in January for, so, they get, they got their regular allotment per student, and the $10 per student, we usually get that as principal sometime in January. Maybe Mr. Allen could explain that a little clearer?
I mean, are there going to be other changes that are going to be happening over the next couple of months?
But I would say to that, the superintendent is correct. This is usually the $10 per pupil that we hold and usually make a decision sometime in the spring. What I would say, and I think I've said to a number of school committee members this today, was, we're making actions on a budget that we don't know is final and on a school model that we don't know what will look like in 10 weeks from now. So, this budget could be significantly different 10 weeks from now, both in terms of what the state is going to provide us and what our model looks like. If we stay remote in the second quarter, there may be additional savings. If we become in-person, we may need more teachers. So, we don't know, on the first day of the school year today, what the budget or our model looks like 10 weeks from now. So, a number of these line items could change. And as we're using schools, we didn't make an assumption yet on building utilities, but as we go through the heating season, we'll have a better sense of what that might look like. But we're intending to run ventilation systems much longer than we did before. So, the way we operate our buildings are going to be different than even what we did last year to end the school year. We simply closed the buildings, now we're using our buildings. So, a lot of things are going to look different over the next couple of months. So, administration could come back to you and say, we need to cut more, or we've identified more savings. And I think what we've done is exhausted all of the areas that we know of at this point based on the model that we're using for the first 10 weeks, where we can identify $15.5 million of savings. It wasn't easy. It took us a long time to go line item by line item and have spirited debates about some of these line items, but we finally got to a resolution where some of you pointed, at least we're not laying off Worcester Public Schools staff through this. There are other staff, Durham employees that are being laid off, but Worcester Public School staff are not being laid off through this. Some will be in furlough, and some will be in delay in terms of when we need them. But the budget is going, the budget and our educational model, once we know those for sure, we'll have better estimates for the school committee.
Okay, thank you. I, I will disagree with my colleagues in terms of priorities. I think that if the money comes back, we need to make sure that we're actually getting materials in the hands of students. I am picturing how anyone's going to be able to run kindergarten without actually having anything. I, I don't know how we do that. And yes, I understand that this is not usually money that the principals have, but my hope would be that this year of all years, that they not only have that and more, because they need that and more. Goodness knows, it's part of the reason why Donors Choose has been so active lately. The other question I had, Mr. Chair, which is not on here but is related. My understanding is that, I believe that the end-of-year reports are now being filed, which would mean that we'd be getting the city's report on spending. As we did not actually have buildings open, how is it that the city, or do we know? How is it that the city represented the police officers that are presented as a charge against the Worcester Public Schools?
I have no idea, Mr. Allen?
So, through the chair, I'll have to look at what the charge was for FY '19. I was a little more focused on what, I mean, for FY '20, I was a little more focused on FY '21. And so, what is, has been presented to us so far is what the budget was, similar to how our budget was constructed. And so, I've already spoken with the city CFO. You know, the actual FY '21 charges that get imported into next year's report will reflect whatever model it looks like through the year. So, we'll reconcile and true that up at the end of this year. So, what was presented now is just the budget, and that's all that we submit to the state right now is a budget. That's just a predictor of what FY '21 net school spending will look like.
Good, okay, thank you. The reason I ask the question, Mr. Chair, is not to actually be provoking, but it's because I really appreciate that what the administration did was look at, what are we actually doing, and let's make sure that we're spending money on that. Let's not be, let's not put up a false front. And I appreciate that, you know, we're not running school buses, so we're not actually going to pay for them, and we're not going to, you know, there are things that we aren't doing. If we, if we don't have buildings open and thus there are services that don't, aren't necessary, then I would say that we should not be representing to the state that we're paying for them, which essentially is what happens with the end-of-year reports as much as it's not funding that we vote. The only other question I had is, through the chair of the administration, when will we be getting an update on school nutrition in public session?
Through the chair, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair, we can probably now submit the school committee a report of what our plans will be. We'll have an initial discussion tonight in executive session as it relates to the impact, but in terms of, we need to actually publicize what our plan is going to be in terms of feeding anyways to the community, and that was just finalized today. So, we'll be putting something together for the community that we will share with the school committee.
Good, because I guess part of, and part of the reason I ask is I don't know if there is action that you need from the school committee, not in terms... Yes, certainly in terms of our employees, but not only that, but also in terms of our communication with the federal government and one other thing.
So, if I can just use a quick minute just to briefly explain what it will be. So, we'll have food distribution sites at schools in high-density... So, we'll have food distribution sites at schools in high density population throughout the city. I think there's, we're about fifteen sites that will be providing meals to students of, across, you know, pre-k through 12. And so, we're anticipating, you know, that students will be able to come to school twice during the week to pick up five days' worth of meals. So, they don't, wouldn't need to come every single day to pick up a meal. So, again, we'll get all of the details to the, to the community and to the school committee, but we'll be having these fifteen feeding locations throughout the city where students will be able to pick up meals.
And through the chair, that will be, the timing of that will be coordinated to work with the remote learning schedule, so that students will be able to be doing nutritional pickup without interrupting their school day somehow?
Right, so that's the final details we're working out, because you may be a high school student closest to an elementary school, which you can go to that school to pick up your meal, and an elementary student can, a sibling can go to the same school and pick up a meal there as well. You're not, you can go to your, any closest school to pick up a meal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I won't repeat some of the comments my colleagues made, but I do wanna credit the administration for some really good work here in a very difficult situation, cutting fifteen million plus on the budget is not easy to do. And I also echo Mr. Allen's comment that this is an unbelievably different budget year, and that this is gonna be a moving target for, for many, many months to come until we figure out what we're doing the second quarter, what we're doing the third quarter and the fourth quarter. Each quarter will be different, and we may have opportunities to have some savings, and, and it may even cost us some more dollars. We should also recognize that the, the virus has caused a major financial impact all across our world, and so we shouldn't be surprised that it's impacting us. My caution is that it's gonna, this impact is gonna affect us for many years to come, looking at state revenues and what's gonna be happening. So, this is just the beginning of, I think, a very difficult time for us looking at some of our revenues. And I'll also just mention that we also, we're also looking to spend fifteen million dollars plus on HBAC and other, other improvements that we're hoping to get funded on various sources, but, you know, we're spending money on the other side just to be able to open up hopefully come second quarter. So, there, this is still a long, this is still a long way to go before we are even out of the woods here at all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Biancheria for a second time, followed by Ms. McCullough.
Thank you, Mia. Several times during the last few minutes of discussion here, it's been said that people weren't gonna be losing their jobs, but I have five different areas, so I'll start off with teacher substitutes. Reduce day-to-by-day substitutes for first quarter, because we're going full remote, and that's a savings that we're looking at. Those teacher substitutes are not considered Worcester Public School employees, am I correct?
So, I think, I think the answer to all, all of the employee groups listed there is their first quarter savings because of the model that we're using. So, they're not being singled out for any other reason other than crossing guards won't be crossing students. There isn't a need for day-by-day subs. We, we have a different solution for day-by-day subs. All of the employee groups that are listed, there's, it's a re, we've, we, we've chosen them because of the educational model we're delivering for the first quarter. That may change in the second quarter if we're back in person, partially back in a hybrid model, then some of those numbers are going to change for the second quarter. These are just first quarter savings for those positions.
I, I understand that. However, to give the perception that people aren't going to be affected by this, that work at Worcester Public Schools is not true, because the next item is instructional assistants. Eliminate and reallocate selected instructional assistant positions. I realize it's due to the remote model. However, the perception is that no one's gonna be affected by this as a person who works for WPS, and that isn't true, because I look at the next one, and it says maintenance service salaries. Eliminate five vacant positions, three electricians and two carpenters. So, if we do not hire back three electricians and two carpenters, is the decision with that made that they're not gonna be working on the air conditioning, the vents, what electrical pieces need to be updated, what work needs to be done for the panelings that need to be put up to ensure that when they have a screen or they have a protector for COVID-19, our carpenters aren't gonna be doing that? So, I'm a little curious, because we have been hired those people, and we're not gonna keep those people on or fill those positions, we're eliminating them for the first quarter? Or are we eliminating them completely? Because then we're gonna need them back, because then we'll be out looking for vendors, and we're not supposed to be looking for vendors. We're supposed to be looking for employees. So, I, I'm, this is why I said I was asking to hold this, because I wanted more discussion, but I'm still keeping that motion. However, these are my questions. Are we eliminating three electricians and two carpenters for the rest of the year? To the administration.
Through the chair, they have vacant positions. So, the carpenters that have been working all summer installing plexiglass through the schools are gonna continue to remain and continue to finish that work until it's completed. These are vacant positions, they've been vacant for a while. Will we need these positions back at some point in the future? Yes.
And three electricians, how many electricians do we have presently working?
I believe there are two or three still on the payroll.
Okay, so two or three. So, we, we're presuming that that small of a crew is going to be able to take care of forty-four schools without hiring a vendor?
Through the chair, we, we'll still need to respond to school emergencies and work throughout the year. And again, the budget will change. Administration will come back with any recommendations to make adjustments to the budget as needed through the quarterly report process.
And then we're looking at personnel. So, we have personnel services, we have security guards, and reduce the security services except for DAB for the first quarter. So, we won't, we'll have our school buildings open, teachers, parents, and custodial staff and so on will all have access, but we will no longer have a security guard at any of the buildings that we presently have security guards in, correct?
I think teachers and custodians will have access to the buildings. I'm not sure that parents will unless there's an appointment, but yes, other than that, we're not gonna staff those buildings with security guards when there's only staff in the buildings.
So, have we come up with a plan? What, what is the plan to ensure that they are safe and the proper, not only COVID-19, but safety pieces are going through and not having any issues? Who's gonna take care of letting people in, picking up packages, and so on?
Mr. Allen?
I don't wanna speak to school security, that's not my area.
Okay. Through the chair, so we have, for, in buildings, there, every building has to have a team, that there is somebody there Monday through Thursday. So, there will be people in buildings to take packages, to direct people that have appointments to come in for whatever business they have planned. So, that should be fine as far as our school buildings go.
Okay. I'll sit the speaker.
All right. I, I have many more questions, however, I will hold off, but I certainly do not want the public to think that people's jobs are not gonna be affected by this because they are. Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's all I started, was telling people we are losing jobs, but yes. Ms. McCullough? You're right, Ms. Biancheria, that's my point.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, could you just clarify one thing, a question that's coming up. I believe we mentioned that with the reduction with student transportation, we don't determine any Durham layoffs that would happen through Durham. We have no say in that. We're not sure that there will be layoffs that would come from them, that, we're just saying that we're reducing our need for transportation for Q1, correct?
Through the chair, Ms. McCullough, actually, that's a, that's a fair and excellent point, right? I guess the advantage of the employees working for a national company like that is that they have a multitude of depots across the state that their employees could be reassigned to.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't mean to say that they're, they're not, you know.
No, I appreciate.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't saying that we know that there are any layoffs for them at this point, so thank you.
Mr. Monfredo? John, I think you're frozen there.
I just think, uh, a quick question. Okay. Can you hear me?
I can be over here, just go ahead, figure it out.
It's to what, about jobs being lost? Uh, my concern is if, in reference to jobs being lost, as Ms. Biancheria mentioned, if, uh, if we did have, which we also would love to have, elsewhere, still.
John, we lost you there, I think.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
All right, one more. Just ask you a question, and we can maybe pick it up real quick.
All right. I'll try once again. What I was asking was in terms of, in terms of what Ms. McCull, uh, Ms. Biancheria was talking about, jobs being lost, in which we certainly don't want to see that happen. If we approved of extending the, the program, and, that, would we have to cut more jobs?
I think I get the gist of the question, Mr. Mayor. I think the gist of the question was if we retain the extended day program, do we need to cut other jobs? We'd have to find two million, one point nine million dollars of savings elsewhere, whether it's through job reductions or other savings. So, the answer to that is yes. And just to give, not, so the answer to that is yes, we'd have to find other savings within the budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you, Ms. Monfredo, and Ms. Novick, another question?
Yes, I think it's important for us to clarify, much in, and I appreciate what was already mentioned regarding, what Ms. McCullough mentioned regarding what we do and don't know, what the actions of contractors that work for us may be. A similar one could be made for the security guards, that's a contracted service. Those are not individuals who work for us. We actually have no way of knowing what decisions will be made by a corporation that answers to shareholders when they have a part of a contract lost. So, I, I think it's important for us to draw a distinction between what our ends and means are, which, as a public school system, we actually exist to educate students and then to also be a good employee, employer, excuse me. We, when we contract with a vendor, vendors enter to shareholders, and they make decisions accordingly, so we should be mindful of that. I think it's also important, I'm running wrong numbers, and I expect, expect correction if I'm off, but fifteen point five million dollars is something close to two hundred teaching positions. We're not doing that tonight. That's a very big thing, and that's an important thing for us to be marking, because there aren't a lot of places where you could say that, and we are tonight, and that's something to note as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We all set then? I'd just like to say, Ms. Allen, Ms. Superintendent, thank you. You know, you presented a well-thought-out recommendation, and not that we like it, but it's what the circumstances dictated, and I think we need to vote this tonight. I think, I've been around, well, I'm not gonna say I've been around a while, but, but I've been around when we cut, no, actually, cut two or, two hundred, three hundred people out of the budget, and the longer you wait, the worse it gets. And, but I will take the recommendation that we send this to Finance and Operations, maybe Jack can have a meeting next week to go more in detail and see if there's other monies, because this, this is gonna be a moving target over the next few months anyways. So, I think what takes precedent right now is the motion to hold, and if you hold it, that means we won't do the budget until next week. So, we'll oppose that, but roll call on the motion to hold.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Glancy?
No.
Mr. Foley?
No.
Ms. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Monfredo? Mr. Monfredo? Ms. Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
No.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, you get that, Helen?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. So, John was, yeah?
Yes.
Thank, I got it, John.
Our next motion then is to approve the recommendation by the superintendent of schools, roll call. Ms. McCullough, you have a question?
The motion that I made, will that come up after this? I just wanna make sure that that's on there.
That was on, was your motion, I'm sorry?
Well, look at, with this vote, looking at if monies are available, or we can look at things to, look at prioritizing the extended day programs.
We'll do that after this, because it's gonna be.
Make sure, yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, so, roll call on the recommendation to, on the budget.
Ms. Biancheria?
No.
Mrs. Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion to suspend, suspend the rules for reconsideration?
On the budget, we can do that. So, first is the motion itself, then there's the reconsideration vote is second. Go ahead, Helen, roll call.
Reconsideration, Ms. Biancheria, to consider the spending rules?
No.
Mrs. Glancy?
I think, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, yes, yes.
She's suspending the rules.
Reconsider, yes, yeah.
Just spending, yeah.
Sorry.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
So, it's all right. Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Now the motion is for reconsideration.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Glancy?
No.
Mr. Foley?
No.
Ms. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Monfredo?
No.
Ms. Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
No. Okay, our next motion is that we ask that we prioritize any additional monies to go to the, what was the motion there, Molly? It was to bring back the.
Of course, my motion is that if our budget situation is to change, or we have additional funding, that we prioritizing reinstating extended day programs after getting information from administration.
Okay, I think so, yeah, I think there's a disagreement on that, so we will take a roll call on that.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, and, yeah, I think.
Can we refer the item to finance?
Oh, yeah, we refer, okay, we refer that to finance, the budget item, the budget to finance, roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, next time, request administration by an update on the COVID-19 testing in Worcester to include Worcester Public Schools sites, which they do. Go ahead, Ms. Biancheria, to read.
I, no, I have some comments, thank you. Since we have been looking at staff returning to our school, this is a very significant piece of the free COVID-19 testing in our city. We also have. We also have, uh, WPS sites that have been set up over the last few weeks. Um, emails have come out to us and so on. So, we're not only looking for PPE equipment for our classrooms, um, misting for the cleaning, uh, but we also are looking for the free testing of COVID-19. And, uh, through the mayor to administration, I would appreciate, um, some updates on how we're doing. The number of teachers that are returning to our schools. Um, do we have any, um, concerns with the staff coming back? Are we going to be requiring anyone to have the COVID-19 testing? And what sites presently have the testing? And how are we doing at the testing? Is the number, you know, i- is it going well? Are there any challenges? I certainly would appreciate an information in reference to it.
Ms. Penanda?
Uh, through the chair, Ms. Biancheria. Uh, so, uh, we have asked every principal, uh, to survey, uh, what teachers were coming back full-time and then what teachers were gonna come back, you know, just for example, to do their chemistry experiments with their students. And, uh, all, uh, teachers, uh, all principals have that list. And it was important to get that, um, related to COVID because, uh, we need to know ahead of time, uh, what classrooms have to be cleaned, uh, the day that the teachers are in. And, uh, so that we, uh, we'll be able to assign that to the custodians in the building. So, uh, each of those, and there's also a COVID site coordinator at each, each building, and then Mr. Padat and Mr. Bezella are the district COVID coordinators. And, um, they have actually requested a copy of that list also, so that they will also have that information. Um, so, um, to my knowledge, none of the teachers have been tested yet, uh, but Mr. Bezella has been coordinating that. I do believe that Mr. Bezella, uh, is able to come on now and discuss that.
Mr. Bezella?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Uh, well, I'm here to answer any specific questions. I, I do, I can tell you this much, that, uh, under the stop the spread campaign that the, uh, governor and the Mass Department of Public Health has instituted in selected communities throughout the state, and I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. There, uh, the city of Worcester has been designated a, a city where, uh, free COVID-19 testing is being done, uh, at various locations. Uh, along with AIDS Project Worcester, they have identified, uh, Worcester as being a steady site between August 19th up until September 12th. And just today, the governor's extending free testing until September 26th. So, um, because of our concerns with COVID-19, not only amongst, you know, community members, but families and staff, we have collaborated under this, this venture. And so, August 19th to September 12th, we have a COVID-19 testing site where we're participating, collaborating with the Mass Department and AIDS Project Worcester. So, six days a week, anybody can be tested from the community. Uh, where we have gotten active is that we have been very much promoting this free COVID-9 testing, 19 testing with families and staff. I have already done two connect ad messages to families and staff telling them that this free testing is available. And so, uh, so far, since the testing has taken place at Worcester Tech, AIDS Project Worcester has tested 436 people. Uh, now, in conjunction with that, that testing site, there is also another testing program going on by UMass Memorial Healthcare and Worcester Together, and, uh, the COVID-19 Equity Task Force in the city of Worcester, under the Department of Public Health, City of Department of Public Health. So, they are going, um, along to various sites in the community. City Hall, yesterday was at Great Brick Valley, to where they're doing, uh, pop-up testing to any community members, in particular for those who can't, um, drive a vehicle. So, they're bringing it very close to their respective neighborhoods. So, with all that being said, I think it's very important that we should be promoting testing. I mean, um, right now, I am, as you know, the COVID-19 coordinator with Mr. Padad, and my responsibility is to provide a variety of personal protective equipment to staff members. We reopened our school buildings, as you know, uh, not only today, but last week. And quite frankly, we have hundreds of people going into our school buildings. It will be, we, we're reopening our buildings with a lot of activity. We have teachers coming back, we have principals coming back, we have secretaries coming back, we have custodians that are already back, that have been working in our schools. We have, as you heard, Mr. Allen, although I don't have the site yet myself, uh, we're identifying 15 schools that will be feeding sites. Some cafeteria nutrition workers will be coming back. So, and then many, many vendors. So, uh, this testing's been going on and we'll continue to promote it, uh, throughout the community.
Thank you, Ms. Biancheria.
Uh, yes, um, do you have a figure for the number of teachers that have returned, uh, so far in our buildings?
I'll defer to the superintendent.
Ms. Bian, uh, Ms. Penanda?
Um, I don't have that number. Uh, the principals, um, have that number. We can certainly, uh, get that. I know that in some of the high schools, there were, you know, no more than 15 people that came into the buildings.
Ms. Biancheria?
I'm just asking on, on that. And then, once we have staff coming back, um, through, through the chair to administration, they're all going back into their schools. Do we have a temperature check as they go in, or are we asking anything as they go in?
Uh, no, the guidance from the commissioner is no temperature checks for students or for adults.
Not for, I'm sorry, excuse me, not for students, because they're not returning. I'm asking about staff.
No.
Through the administration.
No temperature checks for staff either.
Okay. Cause I, I was under the, um, impression that it, through the city, when people were going into their different buildings, they were having temperature checks prior to?
We stopped that.
So, you did, the city stopped it?
City Hall stopped it. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I think other departments are continuing it. I'm not quite sure, but that's why I was asking that, because I didn't think it was that bad of an idea. I thought it was a pretty good precautionary measure. Um, are we asking our teachers who are returning any specific questions to do with COVID-19, such as have they traveled out of the country or anything in that manner?
Well, we just did a school reopening video, another one for all teachers. They saw it, um, they saw it today. And it talks about the mass, uh, the governor's mass travel order, which we're telling them to read because it will give specific instructions on what, uh, people should do if they, they leave the state and come back, and they're coming back from a higher-risk community, then they need to, it will affect their work condition if they don't, uh, do certain things.
Okay. So, we are looking at that as a precaution. And then, uh, lastly, uh, to the, uh, through the mayor to administration, when, when we are looking at, um, parents going to the school for whatever reason, are we setting up, it sounded as though we're setting up appointments for parents to go to the schools?
Uh, Ms. Penanda?
So, most of the time, this is for the, uh, for the middle and high schools, because that's normally where you would register. Even though we have done a online form that goes directly to PIC, um, they have been sending them to the high schools to register. Uh, so, what would happen is they would have to, they're telling them to, you know, call the high school, or if they go up there, they ring the bell. Somebody comes out and then sets up an appointment with them. So, everything is by appointment.
So, they're all having an appointment, and we're requiring that they wear a mask. We stay six feet, uh, for safety purposes for our other employees.
Yes.
So, if we don't, it's, um, if we don't have any security guards that are there, um, who is responsible for the comings and goings of, of, of staff and someone at the school sites?
I think she already answered that, Ms. Penanda.
Yeah, so it's a, there's a principal and assistant, or an assistant principal and assigned every day. So, somebody on the team answers the door and is responsible for who comes and goes in the building.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you.
So, refer that to administration. Roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Next item is, uh, request administration by a report regarding the remote warning highlights of chapter 74 courses. Ms. Biancheria?
Thank you. Uh, yes, we all know the importance of chapter 74 courses. Um, I have discussed this a number of times. So, what I'm looking for is how are we working to ensure that these fabulous opportunities continue for our students? We've talked many, um, Zoom calls, uh, many hours on accommodating our students, um, with their education and their subjects and so on. Um, the area of chapter 74 has always been hands-on experiences and opportunities for our students. So, I certainly look forward to, um, having this discussion in the school committee. Is it possible that this report can come to us? If not next week, then our next meeting in September?
Okay, we'll get that in next two meetings, Ms. Penanda. Is that?
Yes, through the chair. I don't think we'd have it. Um, we would have to, you know, get together with the, um, Patty Samoa and Jean George, our two, um, vocational directors. And then they would have to, you know, be able to write the report. And right now, they're trying to get things up and going for school. So, if it could be the one after this one, that would be great.
If it, that would be, um, the September 17th, Thursday?
Yeah, we can do it, right? Yep.
That, that would work. Okay.
He's gonna send that to the administration for the seventh, report back on the 17th of September. Roll call.
Thank you. Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, so approve a prior year payment amount of $380 to PS and Oil Service, Inc. for, uh, oil service at Foley Stadium. Roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, so adopt the updated, uh, Title IX policy-related procedures. Um, I'll set, roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Chair.
Mr. Foley?
Oh, you, I was waiting for you, and you didn't raise your hand.
I got my hand up. You didn't look.
Okay.
I'm gonna vote no. I wanted to say why.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Foley, what are we doing?
No, we, she had her hand up. I didn't see it. So, we're gonna go to Ms. Novick, and you got two minutes. Go ahead.
I will be brief. Um, for those of my colleagues who aren't aware, the reason that we're revising the Title IX policy is because, um, Secretary DeVos has, uh, essentially shifted. Um, and there's been a great deal of, of, of national concern about this. Um, the ways in which sexual assault and sexual harassment are investigated, um, by institution. In particular, there's been a great deal of concern on college campuses. Um, I, I'm sure I don't need to say that entirely to the present company. Um, it gives a great, a larger degree of credence, um, to the, um, accused and takes a great deal of power away from the accuser. Um, is a summary, it's my biased summary, but it is nonetheless a summary. And it's a, a, a concern that has been raised significantly across the country. Um, so, uh, this policy is something that, um, is being recommended. It was actually, I think, supposed to be in place by the 14th. Um, but it, um, it is also something that's being challenged in federal court by 18, um, state attorneys general, including our own, um, as well as a significant number of survivor groups, victims groups, um, and women's groups. Um, I can't a good con, support it. Um, I asked today what the consequences would be if we didn't update it. And my understanding is that at most, we would have a finding the next time the state comes in, um, and doesn't investigate, it does a, a work, um, and looks at our policies. Given that that only happens every so many years, um, given that at least some of us, I know, are rather hopeful that we will have a different administration in Washington fairly shortly, um, I'm willing to take that chance. Um, I, I think that not actually having a policy that disempowers women, um, and dis, not just women, disempowers, um, anyone who has been victimized, um, is something that is not, is, is inappropriate. Um, I don't say that to accuse any of my colleagues who will vote the other way. I know that, you know, we're running a system and sometimes we, we do things that we don't necessarily agree with because we feel that we need to. Um, but I'm willing to take the hit, um, if there is one that would simply be a finding that says you didn't have a policy that lined up with federal, um, regulation on this. And that is all that would happen. Um, because I think that it's actually much more important for us to have a policy that, um, shifts the power to the side of the, those who have potentially been victimized. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Maybe just a question, uh, what have, it's been, you might not, not know the answer, but if we don't pass it, we table it to January. I don't know, and, uh, take the vote then. But is this something that needs to be done right away? But, uh, is this your recommendation?
Oh, you're on mute.
Oh.
Here you go.
Through the chair. You know, I actually don't know if that's something that we could, we could wait to do. Uh, the policy book is, you know, student policy book is already being printed. And, uh, we would have to, us, add a form in, uh, to update it. Um, so, I guess that would have to be a decision of us, of the school committee.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna say, but just maybe we can hold it and then, uh, take it up and just, that has to be with the 14th, you said, anyway. So, uh, okay, so the motion is to hold. Uh, roll call.
Ms. Biancheria? And the motion to hold?
No.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say, can, um, I just wanna thank committee member Novick on that, because I really didn't know what would happen if we didn't vote that in. And I thank you for the updated information on that. It's important to know that stuff. Thank you.
Okay, we are going, oh, one more item.
It's not correct.
To consider proposed policy of EBCFA regarding face coverings. Ms. Novick?
Uh, referrals to governance as it reads.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Discuss strategy, respect the collective buying, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the buying position of the public party, and the chair so declares, which I do. Coronavirus, COVID-19 related issues, education association of Worcester units A and B, aides to the physically handicapped, minors and drivers, and structural assistants, parents' liaisons, student therapy assistants. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public party, and the chair so declares, which I do. Massachusetts Commission against Discrimination Litigation, former employee. And also to discuss strategy with respect to collective buying, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the buying position of the public party, and I do declare that, on the coronavirus, COVID-19 related issues, uh, Nage R1 to 16 cafeteria workers. And to discuss strategy with respect to collective buying, to conduct collective buying regarding the grievance 19 slash 2023. We will not be returning to open session tonight, so let everybody know. We will not be returning to open session. So, the motion is going to executive session. Uh, and I think we're gonna take up first is for, we'll probably take up 192023 first. I think that's the, uh,
grievance.
Is that the one we have people coming in on?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Probably do that first. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, so let's try to get on the next, on the next line, if we can do that.
Is there a telephone number?
It was just recent.
Yeah, I went on to my iPad on this. It's fine.
It's a new Zoom number. So, you just click it.
So, John, you'll be able to get on the Zoom? We do that, we can, uh, call me and I'll give you the phone number.
All right. Thank you.
Is someone going to send us the information for this?
It's, I got it already.
It was just recent.
On, on the iPad itself?
Yes.
Yeah.
Your schooling one should be fine.
Okay.
Do you want me to keep this open until everyone's in the other one or close? You close it.
You can close it.
I don't believe you can keep it open.
Oh, that's right, okay. All right, I'll close it.
So, Andy, you show you're gonna shut down recording.
Stop Facebook.
Yep. And then once you get this done, then you can.
I'll start it.
The other one. Yep, and Sarah, you join with WPASM2, I'll join WPASM3, we'll get them off. Started.